Good evening. It's March 10, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council. The open meeting law, which is about to expire, it allows us to hold these meetings without a quorum physically present in the room. But I'd like to make note that right now we have 12 of our 13 councillors in this room. Welcome all. Nice to see you. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media. Sorry. Given that we have a quorum of the council in the room, I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:32. I'll call upon each councillor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed. Please unmute your mic. Make sure that we can hear you and you can hear us. And then mute your mic again. Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette. Lynn Griesmer is present. Councillor Henneke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Indy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
Councillor Walker. Not present yet. Okay? There's no chat room for this meeting. If there's technical issues, please let Athena and me know. The order of the agenda is not altered during this evening. There will be one general public comment, period. The announcements are on the agenda. And I want to point out that the CRC will meet this Thursday, 13th at 4 o'clock. Finance will meet next Tuesday, March 18th at 2. And GOL unfortunately is not able to meet this Tuesday because of a glitch in the website. And we're exploring whether or not we'll be able to meet on Tuesday, the 18th. And TSO is meeting on Thursday, the 20th at 10. The CDBG is holding an advisory committee public hearing on March 13th from 7 to 9. We have no hearing tonight. We will have one in two weeks. And we're here to have general public comment. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room, if you have not signed up already, please do so with Athena O'Keefe over here. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Athena, how many people have signed up?
Two.
Thank you. And there is one person on Zoom. We will begin with, let me just state the following. Public comments are on matters within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the Town Council. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawlessness activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker is engaged in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of the freedom of speech. Where recognized speakers in the order in which they have signed up, we'll start with the town room.
Myra Ross.
As you come up. We want to make sure the light is on. And Athena will do that. Hold on, hold on. There we go.
And there's a mic.
Right there's the mic.
And I'm supposed to push the button?
Don't, don't push the button.
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Myra, please state your name and generally where you live.
I am Myra Ross. I live in District 4. And I am here, I am currently the Chair of the Disability Access Advisory Committee, which will hold its final meeting tomorrow. Tonight, the council is being asked to appoint the new commission for people with disabilities, which will begin on April 8th. And I'm here to thank the council for voting to create this commission last spring, to thank Athena for working with Pamela Young and me, and our vice chair at the time, Martha Smith, who has since moved out of Amherst unfortunately, in writing the charge for the new commission, and thanking the council for deciding to appoint the commission. In some ways, there will not be a very large change in what the commission does over what the DAAC does, but it is an elevation of status for the commission, for the whole, for the group of people in town who have disabilities. It makes a higher visibility. We report directly to the town manager. And we are enabled to raise funds from private sources and from public sources. So if you are a town resident and you have always wanted to fund a particular project that would support making life easier for people with disabilities, you can now do it. So I expect a flood of contribution. And so, I mean, but all kidding aside, we did it. We requested this of the council about a year ago, really in memory of and to honor Joseph Tringali, who was a disability activist who lived in Amherst for many years. He was director of Stavros, I believe, for a while. And he really, he was, he never stopped talking about the needs of people with disabilities. And he always talked about this, that we needed to be a commission. And so we requested this really in his honor. But many communities in Massachusetts have had commissions for years. So this is not novel. This is not new. And I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved in helping us create it, particularly Paul, who's been really patient with our indecisiveness about certain things. But we really wrote the charge with editing from Athena and from Paul. And I just think it's sort of the way that government is supposed to work. So I just said, I just want to say thank you. And I also want to say in response to something Lynn said earlier, the open meeting, the allowance of remote meetings is going to expire on the 31st of March unless the legislature extends it. And it is one of the greatest equalizers of access to people with disabilities, not to mention people from the western part of the state who get to participate in state meetings much more than they ever did. But this, the first thing, the elevation of the, of people need, the needs of people with disabilities has to start there with full participation. And I hope, I believe that the Town Council has taken a position in favor of the extension of the open meeting law and the ability for towns to, or the need for towns to have remote participation, because that is a true equalizer in access.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to stay with the room for this time being and go to the next person. And then I'm going to go to Zooms and several more people have raised their hands.
Tom Warger.
Thank you. Tom, if you'd just state your name and where you live. Thank you.
I am Tom Warger. I live in District 2, Echo Hill North. And I am not here today to talk about many roundabouts, much as I like them. But I am here, my capacity is Chair of the Public Art Commission. As noted in the materials that you received for this meeting, this is the first run-through, first implementation of the percent for art bylaw. It's something that the town worked on for many years, has been anticipated for a long time. And here we are. The, I am joined by six members on the commission. We are charged under the bylaw with working with the town manager, with town committees, project committees, departments, and the public as we move through this process. We have been doing some research at the request of the town manager. And we stand ready and really very excited to work on this project. So I'm very grateful for it, to see it come along. And we'll be, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for joining us. And thanks for those of you on Zoom. We are going to go to the people on Zoom. At this point, five people have their hands raised. We are going to continue to stick to the three-minute timeline. And we'll begin with Jennifer. And I'm going to just apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. Just lightly correct me, okay? Jennifer Curial. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Jennifer Curialy. I live on Woodlot Road in Amherst. I am a parent of a child in Fort River in the Comananté's program. My child also accesses special education there. I am here tonight to ask the Town Council to allocate more funds to both the elementary and regional schools and to revisit the way that you allocate funds, given the nature of what is happening in our country and in our schools. The old way, business as usual, just no longer applies. There is an assault on education in this country. And at the same time, our public schools here in Amherst are in crisis. Please listen to the educational professionals when they tell you that the proposed budget cuts would harm our students. We need to adequately fund our schools and allow Amherst to be an example of a town that still values education. Additionally, I feel that I must speak out about some of the questionable statements and beliefs that I've heard expressed recently by some Town Council members about special education and its costs to our schools. Let me be really clear about this. Special education is a federally protected right. At least it has been, that could be changing as we speak. But at the moment, it's a federally protected right so that students with disabilities can access the curriculum. Under the law, all students, regardless of race, religion, ability, socioeconomic status, are entitled to a free and appropriate public education and whatever support they need to be able to access that education. However, I've heard Town Council members and other officials talk about the quote ballooning costs of special education and whether or not our special education services are overshadowing general education. And if somehow we can negotiate down IEPs to save costs. Not only is this scapegoating and othering an already marginalized group of students, these statements are just false. The cost of everything is up, not just special education. And IEPs are not negotiated based on cost. They are created based on need. Just like your doctor is supposed to formulate your treatment plan based on medical need, not cost. So please, please stop expecting the schools to solve this budget crisis on the backs of kids with disabilities. That is shameful. They are not the reason the schools are in trouble. The problem is that the cost of everything is much higher and the small budget increases are not keeping up with the costs and the needs of students. And the other major problem is the charter school formula. We have Chinese immersion, bleeding money from our district at an alarming rate. So I ask that people please stop scapegoating a bunch of little kids with disabilities. Special education is not the problem. Special education is the answer. When students get what they need to be successful in the classroom, everybody benefits. General education students benefit, teachers, staff, the whole community. So I ask that you please revise how you allocate funds to better support our schools and help Amherst get back to having functional and thriving schools for all. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you for joining us, Jennifer. Angelica Bernal, please, Bernal, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. My name's Angelica Bernal. I live on Hickory Road and Hickory Lane in Echo Hill. And I'm a parent of two school-aged children. And I'm here to read a statement on behalf of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council Steering Committee. "In the past month, we've watched as a new Trump administration has slashed critical social programs impacting millions of Americans, many of them the most vulnerable citizens. Of these millions, one target has been individuals with disabilities. As parents and caregivers of children with disabilities, we watch in alarm, but not just at this federal landscape. What raises our alarm is equally the ways in which this slashing of budgets at the federal level is also happening here at our local schools and that these decisions are made by a town council that professes to represent progressive values. We are equally alarmed that our special education programs are the targets. When the majority of cuts come at the expense of our special education programs, we have to ask about the message you are sending us. Is a quality education for children with disabilities less valuable or urgent? For the past three years, we as CPAC have come to countless Town Council meetings, begging our elected officials to refrain from making sharp cuts to our special education programs. We have pointed to arguments time and again about the real impact such cuts have on our kids, how reductions to special education teachers and parents mean our kids are not getting what they need to succeed, let alone what is their legally mandated right under existing law. We say all this with passion, but we must now conclude you're not listening. Instead, you tell us that budget cuts are necessary because we must learn to live within our means and because special education programs cost too much. Just recently, at a finance committee, we heard one of you state that we have to make these cuts so to, so we can take special education programs for being the quote best to just basic. This kind of comment, which I've heard repeated in some form in the past, tells us that, one, you're failing to understand what it takes to run these programs. Things that our teachers are better informed to tell you, they're the experts. Please listen to them. And two, that the catastrophic consequences of making these cuts, they are going to be catastrophic because in trying to balance budgets, you are degrading critical student services, services which I must remind you are legally mandated. If we say, please consider making these cuts in other areas of our town service or capital projects, or at least treat us with the same parity and equity as these projects, I am told, we are all told time and again, do you like your roads and your drinking water? Education for our children is just as essential as the water we drink and the food we eat. And just as food prices have gone up, so has the cost of education. We are not asking for luxuries, but necessities and urgencies. We are asking for our schools to not be willfully plunged into crisis. We are simply asking that our children have their legally mandated and critical essential services. We are asking them to simply be given the same opportunity that generations of other Amherst residents have had in the past. We think that that's not too much to ask. And in a town like ours, the money is there. In a town of halves, we families with school-aged children are the half-nuts. To begrudge our children a quality education is shameful. And we can only conclude it's either the result of either lack of political will, different priorities that you hold, or both. And we find this deeply troubling."
Thank you for joining us. I want to pause for a moment. Alicia Walker has joined us. Can you hear us, Alicia?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Andre Gadera, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Ellen Jedry-Kadera. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm just using my husband's computer. Thank you. I live in District 5. And I have two young students in the Amherst Elementary School system. I do want to note that I'm really happy to hear about the Disability Commission in Amherst. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about their work in the future. I would like to make comment regarding the budget. And first, I would like to ask the council to please, please allocate more funds to our schools. I would also like to make a request of those of you who were not able to attend the budget hearings for the regional school district as well as the Amherst school district. At each of those meetings, there were at least 50 folks in attendance, parents, staff, and at least 50 Zoom attendees or more. There were a number of Zoom comments made, emailed comments, voicemails, literally hundreds of people calling in. Listen to the families, teachers, and staff of our community and listen to them tell you how devastating these cuts will be. It was pretty incredible, given that most families, it's really hard to find time in the middle of the evening to come and either be in person or even be on Zoom. I have a child knocking at my door right now. And the next thing I want to say is that, as previous callers have mentioned, over the last six months, members of Town Council have made statements suggesting that our schools cut costs by reducing special education services while still somehow meeting the needs of our children. There's also been suggestion that our schools are somehow giving preferential treatment to special education students. And I want to remind you of two things. Many of the services that our special education students receive are legally mandated because they are needed. And our students are entitled to these services even when they're expensive. If you listen to parents and educators, you will hear them saying that it is already difficult to meet the growing needs of our children with our current staffing. We need more resources in special education, not less. And in the words of one special education professional in our school, "When you fund special education appropriately, everything else falls into place." And the reason that is, is because special education isn't off on its own in one building far away. There are many special education students and general education students together all day long. And there are many that are mainstreamed. And for the kids that are in the sub-separate programs, they are with the general education students as well. They benefit each other. They have an impact on each other. You can't just pit one against the other. So please, we need more resources for education as a whole in this town. And many of us are working very hard to advocate for more funding at a state level. When it is suggested that we can meet the needs of our students with less money somehow, those efforts are undermined. So I really hope that you will think more about providing more funds, allocating more funds to our schools and our students. I appreciate you listening and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for joining us. Rachel Hall, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi there. Thanks so much for hearing me. My name is Rachel Hall. I live in Echo Hill. I have two kids, one attending Fort River, well, two attending Fort River and one approaching the middle school. I am calling in the middle of dinner and a long day of work to ask that you allocate more funds to our regional schools. I will keep it short. Everyone who has already spoken has been so eloquent. I don't have a kid with an IEP. And I can tell you, I see that special ed helps all kids. My kids benefited from a reading specialist. And my kid also lost 40% of their class in third grade when there was not enough support in the classroom for kids that needed it. I want to tell my loved ones who are very nervous about the world and are fleeing different states with not as great supports. And I want to say that we have robust school systems that will support, support them. I want to tell them, like I was told, move to Amherst. The schools are amazing. I'm begging you to please think about a different way of a funding model and address all the concerns that were spoken here tonight. Thanks so much for your time and energy.
Thanks for joining us, Rachel. Jason Dorni, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Jason Dorni. I live in Hickory Lane in Amherst, the Echo Hill neighborhood. I wanted to just echo a lot of the comments that have come before me. I believe that our schools are incredibly important for not only the education of our children, but for our town in general. Good schools help to create good towns. And I think that providing additional funding for the schools is important for all the reasons that have been stated previously. And it brings families to the town. As everybody has said, in this time, there's all sorts of shifting norms, shifting values. But one of the things that I believe Massachusetts has held close to throughout the Commonwealth's history is education. And it's incredibly important that we provide education for our children to know that they are going to grow up and have a good foundation for whatever it is that they do in the future, whether they be residents in Massachusetts for the rest of their lives, residents of Amherst for the rest of their lives, or they go off somewhere in the world. The early education that they receive is a foundation for the rest of their lives. I just want to make sure that everybody understands how valuable this community thinks our schools are and how much we value the education. And we are begging everyone to please, please allocate more funding to the schools. And also, please prepare some sort of plan so that we're not constantly having a conversation like this year after year. What is it that's being done to protect our schools, not just now, but five years from now, 10 years from now? I would love to hear a plan from everyone, or from the council at large, as to how that's going to be done. And I want to also thank all of you for participating, for being on the council. I know that at times doing this is, can be a thankless job and you probably get more abuse than you should. And I just want to let you know that while this is a very, people are very passionate about this subject, that we are thankful that you all are taking the time out of your schedules to, to participate and to be on the council. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Jason. Phalene Bedrick, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Phalene Bedrick. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I am a resident on Olympia Drive, just moved to Amherst.
I need to, I'm sorry, Phalene, you need to move a little closer to your mic.
Okay, thank you. I just moved to Amherst after graduating about 20 years ago from the University of UMass. And I expect you all to see more of me. So thank you all for being part of democratic government. That's because I think I could be likely one of the first to say that I think the Town Council may need to declare a state of emergency as we're in a constitutional crisis. At great risk to my life, I put faith in Allah and human rights and indigenous nations, both organizations and people I have never met, to say this. We are in a money war of austerity and our dollars are now to Doge. They own our national treasury. So if you expect the government to give us any, as an electrop progressive town with an agricultural history and academics, you're naive. They will starve us of what makes us special to get us complicit. So because this is more than the USA, it's Brazil, it's with Priscilla Bolsonaro, it's other nations in conflict like Haiti. It could be here. And we need to lead as a town like our universities. And I think the answer is to give each other credit instead of depending upon Capital One, instead of depending upon Bank of America. Not to say that a bank is a problem, since I love credit unions. I think we could make our own town currency. And I couldn't do this alone. I just moved back here. You all know what makes Amherst tick. So the simplest thing I thought would be something cute, like ice cream, like an ice cream-backed currency. But really, my thought would be that any resident who would participate in this currency would want some sort of universal basic income piece. That would be a standard where we don't have to mint money at whatever subsidy rates, unless it's because this emergency would be able to keep everyone with an equal flow. And I only know one currency that does this digitally and it's called Duniter. D-U-N-I-T-E-R. It's made in France. So I believe that may be something of positive value. And we could trade dollars to Duniter, one-to-one, and only trade back two of our dollars to one American dollar and try to take our money seriously. Because right now, we may be denied any more access to American currency despite being as American as apple pie. So thank you all for meeting me in this hour of my need. And I thank you all for being present every day for Amherst. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Rebecca, I don't see a last name, so please enter the room and state your full name.
Hi there. I'm Becca Watkins in Echo Hill. I'm here to echo what every other parent is asking, and that's to please allocate more funding for our public schools. Amherst should and can be a town that people want to move to. On a personal level, I can tell you that I would not recommend families to move to this town solely based on the status of our public schools and how they are prioritized. We moved here three years ago and I was eager to get other families to move here. And once I experienced the lack of... And once I experienced, um, the lack of prioritization and funding for our schools, I knew I could not have other families move here. And I think that's something that we should all strive for. We want to be a town that people want to move to. And one of the best ways we can do that is by prioritizing our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Rebecca. Shannon and Wait, please enter the room and state your name. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is actually, uh, Lay J Kohler and Shannon Kohler. We live on, uh, Kingman Road. I am a product of the Amherst School System. Um, my uncles were, my father was, my grandparents were involved. There's a, there's quite a history with Amherst Schools. I definitely, I mean, I, I want you guys to relook at the budget and consider this as a pivotal moment to reverse course. The quality of our town is dependent on the quality of our education. And that's why we, I brought my wife here. That's why we had five kids, now three kids in the system. And, you know, I, I could tell you like the fond memories of having the opportunity to go to Germany, having German class, um, orchestra, chorale, the arts. We have to make ourselves different. And I think we need to take this moment and look the other way, invest in our future, invest in our children and reconsider the budget. It's like what everyone else has said here. Um, we, we have talked about money going to, you know, the new bank center, money going here and there. There's free cash. We need to take education seriously. We wouldn't have the support of the town without the residents staying here, without the children having fond memories and a good education here and what Amherst was originally known for. Let's not go the other direction, especially with the, with the political, political atmosphere and the nationwide issue of education in general. We can break, we can foster and nurture talent here and, you know, create more fond memories, just like I had of the Amherst School System. Let's change course. I urge everyone to please change course. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Uh, Lincoln Smith, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, my name's Lincoln Smith. I am actually a resident of Holyoke, Massachusetts, but I am a teacher in the instrumental program for elementary schools. Um, I can come at this from a kind of unique angle. Um, I am licensed to teach and have taught both special ed and music for the past decade. Um, I want to clear up a few misunderstandings I think people might have about special education. As has been mentioned before, that these services are mandated and protected by the federal government. And so when you make changes and cuts to special education or special education models, you are essentially stabbing yourself in the neck. Because what will happen is that if parents do not feel that their children's services are being adequately provided. I believe Amherst residents are known for being litigious and will sue the school district. Also, removing special programs like having someone who is a reading specialist, like cutting programs like the autism program or the ILC means that more kids who are not receiving that specialized instruction will have to leave the district for outside district placements and those are extremely expensive in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so really a cut to special education is actually doing the opposite. You're actually spending more money to do the same kind of work that you would have had to do before. Now, growing up, I was a kid who did not have the same kind of brain as everybody else. I hope some folks who are listening can have a little chuckle at that. I was okay in school. I did okay in my classes. And I had my heart set on becoming an engineer. I thought I was good at math. I loved to build. I loved seeing how things worked. I loved puzzles, picking things apart. And so when it came in high school that I had the opportunity to now finally take the classes that I knew would put me on a path to being engineer, I was told by my math department that I didn't have what it took. And that moment was a really important moment for me in my life. Because all the while I've been doing, you know, these engineering projects and building and coding, I'd always done art and I'd always had music in my life. And so this was an important moment for me as a kid to realize that I have another option. There is another option for a different path. And when you cut art, you're cutting the ability for someone to express a part of them that isn't necessarily measured by a math test. It isn't necessarily measured in ELA. It will not show up on MCAS. It will not show up in your reporting data. But those qualities are so important for our kids and for our futures. Anybody who has ever had an art teacher, a STEM teacher, somebody who took an interest in them when they were growing up knows how impactful that experience was. How much that that made them love school that much more, want to be in school, want to come to school, even though they weren't the kid who was going to be an engineer, who wasn't going to be a biochem major, who wasn't going to be an attorney. But that kid knew that school had a place for them and saw the good that was a part of them. And, you know, this is particularly sad for me because Jennifer Curial, who was just on, is here begging you guys for money for her kid who I teach, who is my student. He is an outstanding saxophone player, but that will never show up on his IEP. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I want to remind people to please try to keep it to three minutes. Uh, Christine Wardjes, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Kristen Wardjes. I live on Bay Road in Amherst. Um, I'm here tonight to ask the town council to allocate more money to our schools, both regional and district. I'm a taxpayer in Amherst and I also work in the Amherst Public Schools. I threw, I have a parent and I have three boys in our school district. And I am proud of the education that my boys receive because of all of their amazing educators. However, year after year, I've been disheartened that the town doesn't, consistently doesn't fully invest in the funding of our schools. Tonight, I'm not here as a parent. I'm here to advocate on behalf of my students. I'm an occupational therapist and I work with some of our most vulnerable students. And I'm here tonight to advocate on behalf of them and their families. I have worked in public schools for over twenty-two years. In my many years in public schools, I can tell you personally that the complex makeup of our student body has changed significantly. You don't have to just believe me. You can Google any, any research and there are lots and lots of peer reviewed studies that outline these changes. As some small examples, in the year two thousand, one in one hundred and fifty children were diagnosed with autism. Today, that number is one in thirty-six. Moreover, our students are still recovering from the effects and the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Studies have demonstrated that these children have social communication deficits that impact their social interactions on a daily basis. Educators on the ground are held to ethical standards of practice by our licensing boards. And we are here to tell you that the cuts as presented are putting our students bodies, our student body at risk and are forcing us to educate students in ways that we believe are unethical. Because we cannot give our children what we know what they need to be successful. While the cost of educating students is growing, the poor outcomes predicted for these children's lives without proper education in reading, social emotional skills, other academics and executive functioning is grim. Moreover, the cost to our community to support these individuals as they head into adulthood is far greater than the amount we are asking for now. We can avoid these dire outcomes of insecure housing and poor employment by educating them now. I ask you to consider our voices. We are not over servicing our children. We are not offering levels of support that aren't absolutely necessary. We are consistently asked to do more with less. My hope is that you will listen to our advocacy and trust that we are the experts and that we know what our students need. I hope that we can proactively consider what our town needs to do to consistently fund our schools so that we aren't always coming to the table and reacting to proposed school, um, cuts to our schools budgets. Thank you tonight for your education and for the time you spend supporting our town.
Thank you. There's two more people we're going to take for public comment. Meg Graham McLean, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Meg Graham McLean. Um, I'm also in the Echo Hill neighborhood and I am the mom of two kids, uh, in the Fort River School. Um, and I'm also here to echo a lot of what has already been said. Um, and it's lovely to see and hear so many people here to support our schools. I would love for you to reconsider the, um, the funding mechanism or the funding structure that you have in place, which is equal distribution to all other departments of the town. I do believe that there's a more equitable way to fund each of those departments. And I think hearing from all of these people, there may be a way to, to more equitably distribute those funds. And so that's all I'm calling for. Thank you all for your service and I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you for joining us. Um, Ariel Templeton, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Um, so, um, my name is Ariel Templeton. I live on Southeast Street. I am the parent of a Fort River fifth grader and a rising ninth grader. Um, I'm also the band teacher at Fort River, Wildwood and Cocker Farm. And, um, I'm on this Zoom meeting to ask that you please fund our elementary and regional schools. Um, just going to echo what everyone else has been saying, but it's important. Uh, the schools across our state are up against a financial crisis this year. I know it's not unique to Amherst, but what is unique to Amherst is that our town has money to help the schools. Um, with these proposed cuts, our schools have, will fall into crisis mode. Um, I work in the buildings. I've been in the district for six years now. And year after year of more cuts and chipping away, I'm seeing the deterioration firsthand. Um, we've slowly been working our way to this point for many, for many years of these cuts, but these cuts will be the final straw for our district. We're going to end up losing an incredible reading teacher at the elementary schools. Um, we might lose, um, some fantastic special ed teachers and classroom teachers. Um, and art, music, PE, library, technology teachers will all be cut to part time. Uh, my program, the elementary band and orchestras, uh, program will also be reduced. Uh, this consistent instability in our district that we see year after year will lead Amherst teachers to seek out more stable employment opportunities. Um, parents will seek out more stable districts and schools for their children. We're already seeing that. Uh, we have so many kids leaving, uh, to school choice options. Uh, the town will lose, the schools will lose, but most of all, our students will lose and that's incredibly unfair. These cuts will hurt our highest needs students the most, creating a district with deep, deep divides between the privileged and those who need our support the most. And it's really shameful and it creates a huge equity issue. Um, and I've said this at previous meetings and I'm sure I'll say it at more meetings. Um, we need to support those who need our support the most and these cuts target them. With Wildwood and Fort River merging next year, investing in our schools now really makes sense. We need the town's support to make it through this challenging year and set a stronger foundation for the future. Um, I feel like it's not fair to Amherst taxpayers to charge our incredibly high property taxes and then let the schools fall into wreck and ruin. Um, please, please protect our students and fund our schools and we, our family really appreciates all that you do. Um, thank you so much for your time and your service to our town.
Thank you. Unless I hear objection from the council, I am going to go ahead and take the next two. Yes, we have to. Thupton Finzong, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
My name is Thupton Dorney. I live in District Two and I am a parent of two Fort River kids. First, I'd like to thank the council members who were able to come to this year's Tibetan uprising day. I see a couple of you still wearing your kathas. Today at Town Hall, Mindy Dom spoke at our uprising day ceremony, calling on us to lead with compassion in our fight against authoritarianism. I think this is, you know, really holds true today, especially with the chaos and suffering caused by the current administration and the potential destruction of the Department of Education. Last week at our District Two meeting, Councilmember Andy Steinberg stated that equal budgets across Amherst departments was to prevent them from pitting themselves against each other. Unfortunately, this is not working when schools are suffering and experiencing cut after cut while other departments have more than they need. We have to ask ourselves if the way budgets are constructed is equitable. Children are one of our most vulnerable populations. And as council members who are supposed to be working in service of our community, it is your duty, your obligation to protect our children. I know many of you care about education and our children and I urge you to show your attentiveness and care through your action, compassionate action that Mindy spoke about today. And that is by modifying the budget in support of our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. Leona, please enter the room. State your full name and where you live.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Wonderful. Here's Leona.
My name is Leona Kohler. I'm nine years old. I love, I live in District Two and go to Wildwood Elementary School. Please think about giving more money to our school. I am lucky to have great teachers and special education teachers who help me read. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. That'll be conclude public comment.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Yes. It's really against our rules. What I want to say to all of you is, we do have, we welcome your public comment. You can reach us through town council at amherstma.gov. You can also do general public comment. In fact, if you write us at town council at, at amherstma.gov, we actually, uh, then send you to where you can make your general public comment. So I, we need to move on with our meeting. Uh, our consent agenda. Actually. Yes, consent agenda is next. Uh, the following items were chosen because they were considered to be routine and it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. I'm going to make a motion. If you want to remove an item, please say so after we have the motion. Otherwise, I will seek a second. To move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. Eight B, referral of Community Preservation Act funding recommendations. Please note, we'll be still having a presentation about these later. Okay? Nine A, approval of town manager appointments to commission for persons with disabilities. Again, we'll have an opportunity if you want to later. Eleven eight to C, approval of minutes. June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, Ju- July seventeen, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Is there anybody that is requesting removal? No. I seek a second. Thank you. We'll move immediately to a, we will move immediately to a vote. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner. Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Time Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Just go back here. Um, there are no, uh, resolutions tonight. However, next time we meet, there'll, I believe will be three. However, I do want to recognize the councils and the many people, the public who gathered with our Tibetan community on the steps of Town Hall this morning, recognizing March tenth, twenty twenty-five as Tibetan National Uprising Day and March twelfth, twenty twenty-five as Tibetan Women's Uprising Day. There's no presentations and discussions. We're going to move on to the first action item, which is the percent for art bylaw. I'm going to turn to the town manager in a moment, but I want to note that there was no motion on this and that this item does not require action by the council unless we wish to change the amount designated by this percent for art bylaw as it applies to- As it applies to the new elementary school. Based upon the memo that is in your packet, that amount is presently approximated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Paul, did you have anything further you'd like to say on this?
Sure, just the memo tries to summarize. What the percent for art bylaw says. As Mr. Walker said, this is the first time this is being utilized. And so we're working, it's working through all the kinks out. The bylaw provides for half a percent of the project cost that the town's funding puts in. And that number is just below fifty million dollars for the element, Fort River Elementary School. So that number is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that is what will be incorporated into the budget and we'll begin the process. Based on any kind of council discussion tonight.
Okay. Floor is open for council discussion. Just let me, Kathy Shane, you've raised your hand.
Yes, thank you. I, I, I wrote a memo to the council, but I failed to get it soon enough to get it on an agenda. So I would like to make a motion to reduce the amount from two fifty to a hundred thousand. This, my memo will provide some background, but basically this amount of money from earlier discussions. Would provide sufficient funds to commission probably multiple pieces of art or one significant artwork for sculpture. And is a substantial amount of money. As Chair of the Elementary School Building Committee. We went out of our way to reduce as much as we could the cost of the project. Because all of this is going to be funded as part of a taxpayer tax increase. The debt, the present for art is part of that package. So you should consider this as a part of the increase in taxes. We.
A point of order. Is there a?
Yes, we need a second to the motion. Kathy, would you please read the full motion?
Okay.
I have it from your memo. Can I read that?
Okay, she has the memo. She could send it to everyone. I'll try to.
We can now post the memo now that you've introduced it.
Okay, so my motion is to set a limit of a hundred thousand dollars for the percent for art budget for the Fort River Elementary School. This budget would need to cover commissioning artworks, installation, insurance if needed. And other town taxpayer costs related to soliciting proposals, public engagement and contracting for the art projects.
I second that.
Thank you, Alicia. Are there, is there other discussion?
Can I speak more toward it or?
Please, go ahead, Kathy.
You know, when, when we, I was on the group, the ad hoc group that actually wrote the bylaw. And ultimately, the council passed, we allowed for the council to reduce the amount. We, at the point we were writing it, we did not think in terms of a fifty million dollar base for it. And so the point five percent could produce quite modest amounts if we were talking about a smaller project. In this case, a quarter of a million dollars is, is a significant amount. And likely more than we need to commission high quality artwork. The other thing about the school itself is there, the, the way the landscaping is, there's going to be some opportunity for external. But there's not an external plaza when you enter, you know, so something large can't be there. So even in the building committee, we talked about a potential beautiful sundial that would go with the theme of solar energy. But not significant because we have playgrounds and other things. So this is not prejudging what could be there, but there are spaces. We identified multiple external walls and internal walls that would allow high visibility. But again, I think the artwork at a hundred thousand dollars could be commissioned. And some, some of the evidence we have from other schools, it could be gorgeous, it could be mosaics, it doesn't have to be just murals. So that is why I am moving to decrease the budget to a hundred thousand dollars. And it basically saves taxpayers a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Counselor Hanke.
If I have to vote on it tonight, I'm voting no on this motion. Art can be expensive, even if it's not big. Especially the commissioning, the installation and the insurance, given insurance rates now. We do not know. What even a small installation might in the end cost. To constrain without knowing. Any real idea of what art might be able to go there? And how much even a basic piece of art would cost at this point in time? I'm not willing to do that. To just say two hundred and fifty is too much, we're only gonna do a hundred. Art can take a lot of forms, too. You don't need a plaza with a big sculpture. Art can be the bike racks. That the kids ride their bikes to that are in sculptural form. Art can be the murals in a building. Art can be mosaic tiles and mosaics on the ground for a hopscotch. Portion of something on a playground. But I also believe that. The bylaw itself does not limit. The art to being on the site at a completely. And Fort River basically. Is adjacent to one of our public commons, our East Amherst Common. That we could think about doing art on that common that everyone. Coming to the school or driving to other schools from South Amherst would see. It doesn't have to be located and limited on that site. And so if I have to vote tonight, my vote is no, because I think it is. We don't have enough information and I think we should leave it to our art commission to be more creative. And be able to be creative with what art can be added to this town.
Counselor Ryan.
I can't, I can't support this. I think we need to honor both the spirit and the letter of the bylaw. I think it would be unfortunate for the very first time that we would make use of this bylaw that we're already reducing the amount. And quite frankly, a half a percent on fifty million over thirty years of the savings, quote unquote, is really not significant. And I think I would rather, as Counselor Hanke has suggested. Give the committee the full amount to work with. This is going to be a beautiful building. And I think the art aspect of it is important. And I think we should stand firm and support spirited letter of it.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
So before reducing, I would want input from both the Elementary School Building Committee and the Public Art Commission on the possible impact of this. And, you know, we may have in our heads the idea of what costs what. And even if we've done our research there, I think that it would be disrespectful to not seek input from those committees regarding the. Impact of reducing those funds. Obviously, I don't think any committee is gonna say, yeah, no problem, easy, less money, let's do it. But what would the impact be of reducing that? And then I would also love to, and I admittedly would like to pour through the bylaw a bit more. But I'd like to see if there's potential for some of this percent for art funding to be utilized over a period of X number of years. By art teachers at the, or art teacher, art teachers, depending on how things continue to progress in our lives. At the schools for ongoing art projects that would be permanent installations. I think that that would be. If, if it's doable within the percent for art bylaw. And again, I've got it up, but. Don't have my highlighters on me, so. I think that would be a great use. And if that is possible, I would not support reducing the funds because I think I know what the impact would be.
Andy.
As pursuant to Town Meeting Rules of Procedure. I make a motion to postpone consideration of this motion until the council meeting of May twenty, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second, DeAngelis.
Okay.
So did he say May twentieth? May, May?
Yes.
Yes, May twentieth, twenty twenty five. So.
Now that there's been a second, I'm going to ask you to speak to the motion, please.
Yeah, I, I speak in. In the spirit of comments previously raised. I instantly, when I heard the motion, thought that I really wanted to offer an opportunity for the Public Arts Commission. To have an opportunity to offer their input. And their assessment of the amount of funds that are needed. I didn't think that this was a motion that needed to be approved tonight. Thought that there was plenty of time. I thought it's for the budget even for this year would be completed. If we gave them that time and that was the basis of the motion.
Okay, so the motion's been.
Point of order. I believe that the council meeting is on May nineteenth, not the twentieth. Is that?
Let me check that.
I, I have my calendar up.
That's Monday?
Yeah.
It's the nineteenth?
Yep.
Is that what you meant, Andy?
Yes, you can make that change.
So it's the nineteenth. Thank you for the editorial. And Pat, you agree with the editorial? Thank you. Are there any other comments? The motion on the floor now is postponement to May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. That is the motion we have to deal with.
So point of, point of order. I thought I recalled that if a, a delay was requested, that it be until the, that we're required to do it the next meeting. Whichever meeting of the full council occurs next.
When, when a motion is made to postpone, it can be made to postpone to a date certain, is my understanding.
A counselor could make a motion to postpone to a date certain. The provision in the charter that allows a counselor to end debate on a motion and postpone it to the next regular meeting is not what Andy is doing.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a different procedure.
I do have one question that goes with this motion, and that is, would you like the commission, the Public Arts Commission? To make a presentation to us? Is that your thought, Andy?
Think that's up for the commission. It just seemed that. It was a well-intentioned group that has spent a lot of time. Developing the arguments for creating a percent for art program. And I wanted to give them sufficient time to make a decision. Is to whether they want to present additional information. Or whether they are feeling that the amount that has been suggested in the motion that's. Was first made is sufficient to achieve their goals.
So the motion that's on the floor is the motion to postpone to May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. That's the, that is the motion to be spoken to. Kathy?
To build on your question, Lynn, I think based on the comments were made on. What would two fifty get you versus a hundred or a hundred fifty? There's something in between those numbers. It would be useful if we come back to this to get that information to us before, before we talk about it again. My impression from earlier conversations on what other schools have spent on art. Is that a lower budget would buy us significant art. And I just want to say there, there isn't. An option in between of just hoping that they, that the commission, the Public Art Commission might come in with less. Once we set a budget, that's the budget that they will spend and they will be advertising and soliciting art, you know, with the understanding that it has to cover. It's, it's not, if we don't set a budget lower than that, it will be at the two fifty level. So I just want people to understand that there's, because you could get multiple art projects. And then the last, Anna, in my understanding of the bylaw. Is that art teachers could and should be part of the selection process. But there wouldn't be a set aside for in-classroom art unless they applied for it, you know, so there could be a proposed. Piece of art done. And the only final comment is because this wasn't done earlier. The installation of all of this has to come after the school is fully created and the project is in. There's no longer the possibility of indenting a wall, you know, creating a resource. There's nothing going to be built in. So if it's on a wall, it'll be applied to the wall. But there are places that could happen. That's so it's not that we can't do that. But it, even doing that would have to happen after the work is done. It can't, there's a provision that it can't slow down construction in, in this, the way it's written. So I just want to, Andy, I think the purpose of yours is to gather information, you know, give us a couple of months to get more information. So I, I just want to make sure if that's the purpose, we ask for it.
I've, I've heard that. Paul, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that when this comes back on May nineteenth, will Kathy's motion be on the table as the action item?
It, it has to be on the, yes, it is. Thank you for clarifying that. I also want to clarify Counselor Hanke's suggestion. Since I think it was a question I had asked at one point, and that is whether or not the. Common out in front of the school, other than these comment, I guess it's called, could actually be a place where this art is placed. So we're going to move to the vote on the motion to, to postpone to May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. I'm gonna begin with Counselor Ette.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
No.
Okay. The motion passes, twelve in favor, one opposed. We're going to move on to. The proposed acceptance. Hold on one second, please. That's not what we're doing next. Thank you. We're going to move on to the referral of the Community Preservation Act funding recommendations to the Finance Committee. We've approved the referral, but I want to just say that although we have approved the referral through the consent agenda. We will have a brief presentation now by the Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee, Sam MacLeod. And at that time, and also Controller Holly Drake is present with us since she was part of the staff for the committee. I want to make sure that if there are questions that the council wants to make sure the Finance Committee addresses. This is the time to raise those questions or to provide them other in writing to the Finance Committee. So with that, welcome, Sam.
Thank you, Lynn.
We're ready to queue up the presentation and Holly, welcome as well. And thanks for your work on this with the committee and thanks to the committee. So.
Thank you.
So yeah, we had a very brief slideshow. I know the council is extremely busy. I do want to call attention to council members, but also to those listening. That there is a report for this fiscal year's CPA deliberations that is within the packet here. And it should be on the Town Council, excuse me, the CPA page website for download some point soon. And there's also this slideshow. I also do recommend to any who have interest to go ahead and take a look at the actual applications that we received. Which appear on the left-hand side of the. The CPA page of the town website. There's good information there. And if someone wants to really look further into any particular project, they can find the actual presentations that were made and the deliberations around them. On a given project by going to the CPA webpage of the town website. And looking at the recordings of meetings. We do that all the time when we're recreating minutes. And I do that when I'm trying to refresh my memory. It's a good resource for anyone in the community. And those who are in the know or not in the know. So we had eleven, this is the fiscal year twenty six. Committee recommendations, meetings commencing next July. That is say, this July first, going through the following July first, if you could queue the next page. I'll try to be quick here, Lynn. So these are our committee members. I want to recognize all the members and their contributions. They've worked very hard. I'm Sam MacLeod, the Chair. Katie Allen Zobel is the Vice Chair. Member at large, Tim Neal, who was a bit busy this year. He stepped down from Vice Chair. Member at large, Bob Saul. Member-at-Large, Bob Saul. Robin Fordham, representing the Historical Commission. David Williams, representing the Housing Authority. Matt Kane, representing the Recreation Commission. And Jason Dorni, representing the Conservation Commission. We don't currently have a Planning Board representative. We're hoping that they will fill that slot in time for appointment for the next cycle. Next slide. So this is a summation of the total recommended appropriations for the projects. We delineate the total values by category. There are four categories for which we can provide funding recommendations. It's community housing, historical preservation, open space, and recreation. The other two, administration and budgeted reserve, are extras. The total comes to $2.292 million. It's important for those watching who may not be familiar that these are proposals and projects and funding that must and can only be spent in these categories. The money is not available for use in other areas. It's designed to enhance and encourage community programs. The largest amount was the recreation. Open space is categorized for a 10% match with recreation, but we didn't have any proposals. Historic preservation and community housing are similar. That includes debt service as well from prior years. Next slide. So here's a listing of the applications that we received, and the organization who submitted the applications, the title of the project that we received on the application is listed first, followed by the submitting entity. The first one you'll see is community housing, general funding, AMAHT, and it's similar for the rest. You can find this in the report for those who wish to look at them by downloading it from the website. But we had a predominance of recreation submittals. We had 11 in total, and our committee responded favorably and wanted to support all of the programs. We jockeyed the dollar amounts that were available to try to accommodate all the projects. There was a higher amount requested than the available funding, and fortunately, the town staff and talked about the priorities that they had, and we were able to reduce some of the proposals to arrive at a funding amount that would allow us to support all these projects. And it's great to see these every year. Next slide. So community housing, we tend to get a proposal every year from the Affordable Housing Trust. That's really the arm that drives the development of affordable housing projects that you see going up throughout town. And they had asked initially for $500,000, but recognizing their existing balance that they have from prior awards, but still wishing to support it, the committee supported a $300,000 recommendation, and the vote was unanimous. Next slide. That next category is historic preservation. We have an interesting proposal from the Amherst Historical Commission. They're looking to do an architecture study of Amherst modern architecture. That's really properties that are defined from the '30s through the '70s. They've done prior studies, but this would be for houses not, that have not been previously inventoried. They develop an inventory sheet with photographs and descriptions, and they submit it to the state registry. Very modest request, 15,000, unanimous approval, eight to zero. The photo, by the way, is not one that would be surveyed, but I found it interesting. It's a Frank Lloyd Wright house that appears on campus university, Massachusetts. The only one in town. Next slide. The Jewish community of Amherst submitted a request to restore the very large stained glass windows that they have on their Main Street property. There are seven of these windows. They're in, they're significant cracking damage and risk of permanent damage for these windows, so there's a sense of urgency. They had a nice presentation to us, one thing that was of interest, and you can find these on the presentation documents. There's no religious icons or statements on the windows themselves, so they qualify for historic preservation. And the, they also are contributing 35,000 of their own community funding for this project, and our committee was very much in support, unanimous, eight to zero. Excellent. This is a couple of images of the Dickinson Farmhouse that you'll find in the Wildwood Cemetery. Very historic building, deeded to Amherst, one of the oldest buildings in town. They had a prior project for us where they redid the roof. They had wanted to do more at that time, but there was insufficient funding. They came back to us. What's interesting, well, what's impressive from a committee member's standpoint is that they raised in two different attempts, 15,000 of their own funds that they donated to this project themselves. We might have supported it anyway, but they're contributing their own funding on their limited budget to try and make this come to fruition. They're going to be replacing the tops of both chimneys. They're going to be reworking the, repointing the bricks throughout and windows on the outside, shutters. It's a significant project, reasonable pricing. Next slide. North Cemetery Fence Replacement. This is on Northeast Street. This is one that they came to us a previous year, but withdrew it due to funding considerations. The request is to remove and replace the fence. The Town of Amherst DPW is going to do the removal work themselves. They adjusted their initial proposal due to the limitation of funding, and it was approved unanimously on the condition that the Town of Amherst work and consult with the Historical Commission regarding the design of the replacement fencing. Next slide. So the Town of Amherst has a lot of recreation and conservation sites throughout town. This is an image here of the Kendrick Park. You'll see a sign in front. Many of our conservation areas and recreation areas have inconsistent signage, and some have those that are in significant deterioration. A plan has been generated by the town departments to try to have a more organized and informative, consistent signage so that visitors can not just identify where they are, but also have contact information if there are any questions or needs. The vote on this proposal was seven to one. The issue related in general, I'm paraphrasing, due to funding limitations, where you're going to prioritize your, your funds. But $100,000, the need is much greater than that. It's apt to be a multi-year project, but this will provide a better presentation for our recreation and conservation areas and also assist with the information. Next, next slide. Mill River Baseball Fields, they're seeking to install electrical and dugout for PA systems and other needs. The original request was $120,000. It's been reduced. This is an overhead view of the Mill River area. There are two fields. The baseball support group has been very involved with working with the town to both maintain the fields. They put a lot of work in to this, and they're going to be working with the town to try and finish this phase of a multi-phase project. $80,000. Next slide. So this is an image of the existing War Memorial Pool by the high school. You'll see the basketball court kind of above the pool in the middle of the photo there. The bath house is to the right of the pool, just above the tree there, which is in significant, significantly bad condition and essentially needs to get replaced if we're going to continue to have the pool there, according to the town staff who presented the proposal. They've already received funding for design, and it's nearly complete. Perhaps it's complete at this point. It wasn't at the time of our meeting. And it, it's apt to go where the basketball court is right now that you see above it. That would be the location. We've already provided last year, 700,000 for this, and the intent of the town is to apply for park and water grants that, for matching funds. These funds would be utilized to enable the town to maximize and leverage other funds that could be coming from the state. So we, as a committee, discussed the various needs of recreation in Amherst, but we did support and want to support this project, recognizing that it's central to the new master plan for the recreations. Important points that were brought up is that there's going to be a new track and field that's being installed, and there are no external restrooms available in that whole area, whether it be the baseball, Zomack Diamond, this pool, or the track and field. And the new design would of the bath house would have exterior-facing restroom, so that was a significant factor for some of the committee members. It's a multi-year project. This is not the only funding, but we wanted to, as a committee, by a vote of eight to zero, to advance this proposal to allow the town to seek the external funding and matching funds that they can. Next slide. Town of Amherst Recreation Improvements. Anyone who's been in town for some time and visitors recognize the really wonderful trails and bridges that we have throughout town, and they're constantly in need of repair. The town does a great job of maintaining these. It's a great attraction for visitors, and there's a huge backlog of bridges and other repairs that are needed ongoing, so the committee wanted to support the town in their efforts to maintain these areas. Next slide. So Grolf Park, here are two images in the photo, the parking lot and the sloping hill. The intent of this application is to do the design work to enable accessibility improvements for the park. As you come in, you'll notice that there's no real sidewalk from the main road on Mill Road, Mill Lane, to the recreation area. It's just an open space, open pavement. And similarly, with the new pavilion that was built down on the hill on the left there, there's no access for those who may have mobility issues. So the intent of this is to come up with a design for this work, and part of that would be to review the entire site in a cost efficiency basis. And they would come back again in a subsequent year, I assume, to commence the, the work. And the committee was very much in support of this, eight to zero. $100,000. Next slide. Parks Equipment, essentially tables, benches, trash containers, permanent ones throughout town. They're very much needed. These photos, I'm not sure where they're located. I believe one of them is, these may be from a website. I'm not sure they're, they're at the Town of Amherst. But throughout town, the, they came to us recognizing the need continually to replace these, and the committee members thought it was a great use of funds to enhance the usage so that not just highly mobile individuals, but families can enjoy these areas. Next slide. We recommended no funding for administration or general reserve fees. Next slide. There are prior years where we have awarded, recommended, and the town has awarded bonding debt service for the various projects that you can see in front of you. Good news is the Kendrick Park that was built about four years ago. The debt service is complete at this time with the fifth, the fifth year. But the one thing that you'll note that's different from prior years, you'll see two for the track and field. There's the original proposal, and then there's the most recent one that was passed this last fall. I did hear today that this track and field project is now going forward, that it's scheduled to commence once the school year's end, which would be great for the town. But this is a summary of the debt that's included in our, we have to support the debt, but it's 638,550 this year. Next slide. So I guess, I guess that's it. Thank you for your patience. I recommend again looking at the applications and the slides, and if there are questions, if I'm able to answer, I will.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for your work. We'll begin with Bob Hegner.
Thanks, Sam. I have a question about the trail and footbridge construction improvements. Are, will any of those be ADA accessible, or are we going to have more of the same that we have now?
I'm not cognizant that the ADA accessibility for the specific trails was delineated. I believe this is to maintain the existing ones. I do see that Dave Zomack is here with his hand raised. I'll refer to the expert on this.
Dave, please go ahead.
Sure, thanks, Lynn. So I think the answer is yes. We are trying to do two things with this funding and some previous funding. One is to rehabilitate the existing ADA trails we have. We do have a couple around town. Some of them need some upgrading. And then two would be to establish some new ones. As the council knows, some of the trails, a good, good number of trails at Hickory Ridge will be fully ADA accessible, but we are planning some other ones around town. I will say that, as Sam noted, there is kind of a backlog of fixing what we have. So we need to repair bridges, we need to repair bog bridges, so we want to take care of what we have before we build new. There are some interesting locations for ADA trails that we're looking at possibly in the future. Wentworth Farm Conservation Area would, would be appropriate for that. Frankly, Amethyst Brook, it's flat, it's dry, it's wide. Something could work there as well. So those are some ideas for the future.
Thanks.
George? I'm sorry, Counselor Ryan?
First of all, Sam, thank you very much for your hard work and the work of your committee. My question is, is about the War Memorial. I think I understand this, but I just want to be clear that the 500,000 essentially is equivalent to sort of good faith money to help us in the hopes of securing a parks grant or some other kind of state aid. And if that unfortunately doesn't succeed, then that money goes back to CPA for other possible uses. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
If the project doesn't go forward, that money and previously awarded money would go back into the pool of available CPA funds. I guess you could call it good faith money. The town came to us with a program, a project that they've identified as a need and indicated the current status of funding. It's a multi-year approach. They did the design work or mostly completed. That initial funding, I believe, was two cycles ago. And they, we're trying to, as a committee, the committee wanted to support the project, but yes, the funding would be returned if not completed, and it's not, it would not be fully funded based upon awarding this amount right here. So the long-term funding is uncertain. So the uh long-term funding is uncertain.
So the purpose is is really to show that we have skin in the game and hopefully that will generate a response from a funding agency. That's basically what it's doing.
I I guess I would say that uh as uh as our committee, we wanted to support the project because we believe in the the value and benefits and the importance of that location. Uh, and from the application, it was made clear that um these funds are necessary in order to maximize the match amount.
David, you have your hand up again.
Sure. I just wanted to add something to Sam's response. And um, I know this is a referral to FinCom, so there'll be more discussion in the future. But um, I wanted to get out in front of the project a little bit. As as the council knows, many, many months ago, uh, there was discussion about the initial design um project that Sam referenced and some of those cost estimates in the neighborhood of four million dollars. So uh, at Paul's Direction, um, um, DPW staff and and others, including myself, have kind of re-reconvened on that topic. And we're, we're trying to look at some creative ideas. Clearly, we would need some outside funding and Sam referenced the park grant program, uh, land and water conservation fund, I think, because it's a federal program, is probably anybody's guess at this point, but uh the state uh funds through park could be applied to this. But the bottom line is we're, we're cognizant of of all the capital projects that are out there. Four million dollars i- is a very big number. And uh, Paul has has encouraged us to really sharpen our pencils and look at some creative options for that building and that site. So we're, we're moving in that direction. And if we were to get these funds, yes, they would build toward a project that would be, would need to be considerably less than four million dollars. We get that.
Um, Pam Rooney.
Thank you. That was close to what I was going to ask, if there was a uh a target amount for the bath house. And I think you just spelled that out. Um, I wasn't sure, it wasn't clear to me, the uh, the borrow for uh the track and field area to have a hundred and twelve thousand for two, two times in one year. Um, has the money already been borrowed and we're starting to pay it back? And this is like payback for two years in a row? Um, how do we, if we haven't borrowed yet, why do we need two payments in one year?
I think this is a Holly question, probably.
That'd be great.
Holly, happy to answer that if you'd like. Please. So there were actually two CPA al- CPA allocations, one for eight hundred thousand originally, and then a second one for eight hundred thousand. So it will actually be two separate borrowing articles at this point if the project moves forward. They were um two completely separate articles in in separate years.
Thank you. Uh, Council Hanke.
So I'll ask a number of questions at finance, but the one I have for tonight um is I noticed that CPA did not recommend any allocation for administration. And normally CPA does recommend an allocation for administration, whatever the maximum allowed by the law is. Um, and so I'm curious why you did not allocate for administration this year. And then I'm also curious, and this might be a Holly or a Paul question, actually, more than a Sam question. Um, how does that affect our budget going forward for, I believe, the planning department is where it would normally be allocated? Or who who is the liaison, but I'm not sure who who benefits from that allocation of admin? How does it affect the budget for whatever department does benefit from that allocation when it happens? Since it normally does have an allocation.
Okay. Holly, you've raised your hand. Please go ahead.
Yes. So the, oh, am I on, oh, I am.
You are. You're fine.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thought I was muted. Uh, so the CPA um votes administrative funds every year and we have enough money in carryover from prior years to cover our administrative funds for future years. Um, we pay for, the CPA funds are administered basically through my office as liaison to the CPA committee. And it is to pay our annual dues um with the CPA coalition. And it is to pay any advertising costs, which tends to run less than five thousand dollars a year. And I believe we have currently about twenty-five thousand dollars in administrative funds as we had set funds aside to purchase some signs and do some other things that just have not come come to fruition yet. So we have plenty of money available in admin funds.
Okay. Thank you. Anna.
I'm trying to get a grasp on the War Memorial Pool project because I'm looking back and I think this is, I I did really try to do my own research here and figure it out, but I'm, I'm, I need some help. So in fiscal year twenty-four, oops, sorry, CPA allocated two hundred thousand for the feasibility, study the initial feasibility. Then in fiscal year twenty-five, uh, we voted seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, at that point, that was referred to in the application as phase two. I think the phases, as the project has evolved, the phases have possibly also evolved, um, which is fine. I I'm just trying to, again, this is me trying to wrap my head around this. And then, um, but, and the same reasons were given. So the same kind of, this is the matching funds, this is all of that. So uh, now it's the second seven hundred and fifty thousand being requested for kind of the same reason, this is from what I can tell. I'd like to know when the um, when the relevant departments anticipate applying for those park and uh LWCF grants. And the jump, the estimated total in fiscal year twenty-five was one and a half to two million. And I just was curious if inflation is to blame for all of those increased costs to now, it now being estimated at four million? Um, or if there's something else? But any thoughts, and if I'm misreading the applications, that's fine. But I'd, I'd like to hear kind of an update on the anticipated timeline and why the cost ballooned so significantly. Uh, and I think that's all.
I see Dave has his hand up. I'll just speak for the committee. There was discussion about one pool versus two pools in Amherst. Uh, the committee supported uh the concept of retaining the pool and therefore bath house uh in the central area due to a variety of reasons, including significantly external facing restroom areas and changing areas. Um, and you're, you know, astute in terms of some of the uh multiple descriptions that were similar. From a committee standpoint, we recognize that uh the design phase is ongoing, but it is not uh set in stone due to funding limitations and not having it all available initially. And uh, we knew the prior year that would, it was going to be more than one request for funding. So we simply voted to support the project and to enable the, uh, do our part to provide the recommendation to enable the town to move forward. Uh, Dave, I see that you have your hand up. I'd be glad to uh, but pass the plug.
I'm actually going to call on Dave and Holly to find, to provide additional light on this.
Yeah, let me, if I could, maybe Holly can speak to the numbers. Um, first, I think it's really important, again, we'll get into more of this with the finance committee. But I I hope you all recall earlier conversations about the bath house at War Memorial Pool. This is a nineteen fifty's building. It is by no fault of the town in, it's an old building. It's cinder block. It is a very simple, but um, uh, uh, a building that was constructed on a very low budget back in the nineteen fifty's. And um, it's, it's showing its age. So DPW every year does, does amazing work to try to get it ready to go for the summer season. And you may recall some years ago, uh, we closed it for a couple of years until we were able to redo the liner of the pool and work on the filtration system. And we spent CPA money, monies on that in the past. And we're doing more of that work right now, DPW is. So we're doing everything we can to keep this resource open, uh, recognizing that we do have two outdoor pools and one indoor pool, uh, public pools. So a lot of work goes into this every year. The plumbing is challenging, the ADA is challenging, um, the electrical is challenging. So um, that, having said that, the initial money, as was was referenced earlier, was for design and feasibility. And that was really to look at a new building that, with the assumption that the old building really was a teardown. So when DPW, working with their team and their designer got into it, uh, essentially that's where the cost estimate came of roughly four million dollars. And again, we don't have time tonight to go into this. But again, think of some of the initial cost estimates for the North Amherst Library and how those climbed. So our initial thoughts were maybe one point five to two million dollars. And that's where this plan of building toward that, the CPA dollars, having a solid design, building toward the um, uh, uh, say fifty percent or sixty percent of the cost and then going out for matching funds. It was a li- a bit of a gut punch for all of us when we got a four million dollar cost estimate. And this isn't, that was not a design that had a lot of bells and whistles. It's a pretty basic building uh to serve the pool, the lifeguards, the public, and have uh external facing uh restrooms and move it to the eastern side of the, the pool at War Memorial. So with that feasibility work and with that number, again, uh, working with Paul, Paul really, and feedback from you all when that came out publicly, we at Paul's Direction really hit the pause button on that four million dollar movement, moving forward. And so now we're in a bit of a phase of relooking at that project. We are going to look at the existing building. We're going to look at some other alternatives for uh redesign. And so that's where we are right now. So I I wish I could give you a timeline on, on applying for grants, but really I can't. And I just want to be upfront about that. We do believe we still want to build toward a project because honestly, that building is not going to be available to the public for very much longer. Every year it has to pass uh codes for the building by, you know, set for building code and health code to open it to the public. And every year DPW does a wonderful job getting us to that, to that finish line. But they and we can't guarantee that every year. And so it's a valued asset to the, to the community and we want to get a plan. But so the, the plan was to keep coming forward with this proposal for five hundred thousand to go with the seven fifty already allocated. And, and this spring and summer, look at a, a creative option that is less than a four million dollar building. So that's really where we are. We, you know, um, there's pictures of War Memorial Pool, the bath house, and they're, they're not great. There's a lot of plumbing issues and ADA issues, et cetera, et cetera, as you've probably seen. So that's one of the best explanations I can put out there tonight.
So can I clarify then that we have actually, with the vote of this additional amount, we'll have put one point two five million toward the bath house?
Correct.
Thank you. Anna, thank you for bringing.
If you vote for this half a million in, in the weeks ahead.
Uh, Holly?
I, I, I think I was just going to say it in a slightly different way is that this is an amount to move this project forward. This amount is not currently a hundred percent tied to a grant match. That's what the hope is, is that it will be a grant match. But if the grant does not come to fruition, we may relook at this. If the grant does come to fruition, this is what it will be used for. But it is not a hundred percent linked to a grant application. It's just additional funds to move the project forward, if that makes sense. I think Dave said it differently. That's the long and short of it.
Great. Anna, does that conclude? Yes. Okay. Um, Jennifer, you had your hand up and took it down.
Uh, yes, I, I'm glad to see this is moving forward. I, my question was really just if the pool was in good shape. This is my question to Dave, but he answered some of that, that they've recently done some maintenance work.
Are there any other questions at this time? Then, uh, again, thank you, Sam and the committee and Holly and Dave for all the work you do with this committee. Um, this has been referred to finance and we hope to see it back uh within about a month at the latest. Okay? Uh, and with that, we are going to take a five-minute break. We will return at eight forty, no, eight twenty, sorry, eight twenty. Thank you. We need to reconvene. Please uh take your seats so we can continue our meeting. Thank you. Please, uh, take your seats so we can continue our meeting. Thank you. All right, we're going to, uh, continue. I'm going to begin the next item, which is, um, a proposal for the acceptance of statute enabling Amherst to install and operate school bus violation detection monitoring systems. I'm going to begin with a motion. Seek a second. And then I'm going to, um, turn it over to Counsel Hanky, who is the council sponsor for this. Um, actually, I'm going to-
Point of order, there are-
I am going to wait. There's two motions. Um, so Counsel Hanky, would you please introduce your, um, proposal?
I'm going to start with a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'm going to move and, and hopefully I pick the right committee.
Okay.
I'm going to pick one. If people have a problem with it, I would be happy to friendly amend that committee on the motion uh, to refer the proposed acceptance of MGL Chapter 40, Section 71 to TSO with, with a report to the town council by April 28th, 2025. I think one, one's dreading it over here.
Second. Okay.
Um, this is the school bus-
This is the school bus.
-violation detection monitoring 180 to TSO.
Counsel Hanky, would you like to speak to you?
There was. I seconded it.
So about two months ago, Governor Haley signed a law that for the first time in Massachusetts would allow essentially, um, violation detection systems to result in traffic or tickets of some sort for motor vehicle law violations. We don't have red light cameras in our state. They're not allowed by law. This is the, this, this school bus monitoring system violation law is the first time in Massachusetts that you would be able to sort of issue a ticket through sort of video camera violations, if you want to call it that. But in order to do so, um, it is, it is, it was written as a local option law. So each town, there's a lot of steps to go, but a town has to accept sort of the provisions that would allow using a video camera mounted on a bus to video people essentially driving by the bus while it's stopped and kids are loading and unloading. Um, this is not monitoring the bus drivers. This is cameras on the outside trying to, to identify vehicles that are not stopping when the bus is stopped to load and unload children. Um, the first step in that authorization is the town council in a, in a city like ours, the town council accepting that law. That does not institute the actual doing of it. The schools are then in charge of deciding whether they want to and then actually dealing with the systems. And I know it costs and I know it's probably unlikely that they would do it. But I was, in looking at this, I was thinking we can remove a barrier to that conversation if we want to. Because since this is the first time some, this type of sort of ticket system would be instituted in town, I thought it might require a conversation amongst us as to whether this is a type of ticketing we would want to move forward on in case red light ticketing comes in later to sort of start that conversation and say, do you know, do we want tickets to be able to be issued through video evidence only? Um, which, which is sort of different than what it's being issued for, but it is a conversation and that, that's why I'm referencing, uh, asking for a referral to have that conversation and say, is this something we want to do? We have a surveillance tech bylaw. We have been concerned about surveillance in the past. I do not believe this falls under that bylaw because it would be the school department instituting, if you want to call it surveillance, surveillance, the monitoring system and all of that. Um, but a committee can certainly look into that. And I also don't know because of how the law is written. This is why that's the schools' problem. We don't own all our buses and we have a region and we have all this complication. I don't think we as a council need to get into that complication. We as a council need to say, is this something we would want to allow in town? And so I'm asking for it to be referred to have that conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Bob, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I like the idea of this, but, um, I happen to be working in New Jersey at a time when they were discussing, they, they were, they had install in, in, they had passed a law that allowed red light runners to be ticketed by automatic means. And they ran into terrible opposition because basically people hired lawyers and said, I wasn't driving that car at the time. You can't prove it was me who was driving the car. So it's, it's fraught with difficulty in actually enforcing it. And they finally just, the legislature just said, forget about it. We're gonna, we're gonna cancel this legislation. So just be aware that the, this is a fraud issue. And I personally have witnessed someone driving by a school bus with its lights blushing. I had stopped behind it and fortunately they were picking up. They weren't drop, dropping off, but I mean, they just went right by it like it wasn't even there. I don't think the person saw it even. They were, they were busy drinking coffee or something, but, um, but I've seen it and I, I really, I want to stop it, but I just want to caution people that this is fraught with difficulty.
Andy?
Yes. Speaking as the, uh, Chair of TSO, uh, I'm not, uh, in any way questioning the decision to make the referral to us, but, uh, we have two major things we're trying to work through on a very tight timeline to see if we can get some progress on them, including the Transportation Parking Commission. I might talk about that a little bit later when giving the committee report. But I would respectfully request that we at least be allowed to get through our May first TSO meeting, uh, before, uh, the date is set for referral back to the council.
Okay. Um, again, the, I, the, it only requires that you give us an update. It does not require that you actually make, take action or recommendation. There's been more than one violation on deadlines. Um, Jennifer?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I agree with, uh, what Bob just said. I lived in Los Angeles where they had, you could get red light monitors and you could get a ticket and it's for the driver, but they only have the license. So I believe they just have since discontinued it. I know people who got tickets and contested it because they said they weren't the driver. They might've been, but there's no way. So it's, it's really difficult to enforce and a lot of states have dropped it.
Thank you. George?
So I'm just quickly thinking aloud what TSO can bring to this discussion. The question seems to focus on whether this body is comfortable with this sort of means of enforcement irrespective of whether it actually works, um, irrespective of whether it's been asked for by any other body, irrespective of its cost. So we're not really going to look into cost. We're not really going to bring the school committee forward because it doesn't really involve that. And I, it doesn't sound like we need to do much research as to its effectiveness, at least in New Jersey and in California. So I'm not really sure what we can bring to this discussion other than asking our colleagues, are you comfortable with this means of enforcement, broadly speaking? Because if we do say yes, that doesn't mean this is going to happen. Um, perhaps for many of the reasons that have already been brought up this evening. Um, cost too much, doesn't really work and the school committees aren't interested in it. So if you send it to TSO, perfectly fine, agree with the chair, we'll take it on. But I don't see what we're going to do with it. So if somebody can help me, maybe the sponsor or one of you all can help me understand what you expect TSO to bring back to you um, other than a survey of what you all think about this kind of enforcement, which we could do right now by a show of hands.
Counsel Hanky?
I think for a change in, even though it might not go into effect because the school committees would be required to actually institute it if we adopted this, um, given the concerns people had about surveillance when we were dealing with surveillance tech bylaw, I think voting on the substance on the same day it is introduced does not allow the public enough time to understand what is being asked and that a referral to a committee allows time for the public to be able to understand what is being asked and make comment on it and all of that. Um, it could potentially be satisfied by just a postponement to a date certain, but, um, it, it just allows more time. I, I would hate for us to make a decision on the same day it is introduced when the public might not, in a wide sense, be aware of this possibility and be able to comment on their potential like or dislike of that form of, of, you know, ticketing and all and get other people's opinions besides just the 13 of us.
Pat?
Thank you. Um, I'm totally opposed to this. Listening to people who've had experience in states where it's collapsed and caused more trouble than it was worth, that's one thing. I also, you know, we, we send it to the schools. Who pays for it? Who upkeep, you know, do we want to spend our money for schools on a surveillance system? And on another completely paranoid level that I never thought I would reach, we have an insane man in the White House with hundreds of people supporting him and backing him up. And I don't want anything that will surveil my license plate. You know, I think about some of the work that's happening to create basically versions of pipelines to get people, uh, to safe havens like Canada or, no, I'm not going to cut it down. I'm not. I, I said I was paranoid. Um, I feel very, very strongly that anything that gives, um, the government, um, uh, any opportunity to surveil or pick up somebody because they were transporting a trans person over the Canadian border or something like that. I don't know how this will be used and I never, ever thought I would be this paranoid. But with who we have running this country, we all need to be paranoid and we all need to step up and speak out and say no to stuff like this. Plus it's going to cost too much money and who cares? And who's going to get the revenue from the tickets if it even works?
Andy?
Well, I'd leave it up to the council, of course, but I think that what my inclination would be as a member of TSO is to look at the statute, look at who are the sponsors, what, um, we might be able to find out about, uh, information that the legislature obtained in, um, in what the legislature discussed during the legislative process. And, uh, there might be a lot of, uh, information that's just not available to us now to answer some of the valid questions that have been put forward. Uh, and, uh, so I, you know, I, I, the reason I wanted to make sure we had enough time is that I want to have time to take it seriously, but not to put off the, um, other work that we've been committed to that I'll report on later.
The motion's on the floor. The motion is a referral to TSO. Kathy?
I think I will vote against it. I don't think we need to set this in motion right now, particularly if the option remains should we ever want to do it and we don't want to spend the money on it, so we won't be implementing it. So it seems to be premature to have to make a decision on it. I also, I, I think the issue of passing buses when the stop sign out is real in town. And I'm not sure what other corrective actions are available, but I'm not sure, uh, quick snapshot of the car that did it will, especially what Bob just spoke, it won't cure the problem. And it tends to be, uh, people in a hurry to get to a class often. You know, they just don't even slow down. And sometimes I think they don't even see this big yellow bus with a little dagger off. But so I, I will vote no because I think I really value the time of our committees and taking time, further time to discuss this. I certainly would like, T, TSO has an agenda with some big ticket items, both cost-wise, but also other decisions that I would like to free up their agenda rather than give them more.
Thank you. Anna?
It's interesting. I, I do support this. I see it as essentially enabling legislation. Um, it allows our schools to make, to, it allows our schools to be the deciding body for the needs of students, which is their purview. Uh, and we need to take this step in order for the schools to have that ability. Um, the ACLU talks about this type of traffic enforcement. And what they talk about is that it's not the technology that's inherently bad. It's that you need strong governance around it. So what I would encourage, yeah? Sorry, did you? Okay. Okay. So I think the, um, what we would need here is to make sure that our surveillance policies, that our other policies are wrapping this up so that we're protecting all of our residents and all of our community members um, so that data isn't shared. We've been doing, uh, we've been doing what seems to be decent due diligence with all of our other policies on looking at ensuring that our residents are protected. We've got, um, we've got policies in place to make sure that, you know, data isn't shared about folks who might be seeking reproductive care in Amherst. We've got, our surveillance policies are really strong um, because of the work that this council has done in prior terms. And I don't see why we cannot make sure that that type of thing is applicable, is applied to this type of bylaw. The other part here is that there are instant, this is not a hypothetical about kids getting hit when they're getting off or getting on buses. This is happening across the state. And I honestly, I see the red light and the stoplight ticketing programs being different than the programs that are about going around school buses. Um, to me, these are, those are different, uh, different concerns. And I hear you, Bob, when you're talking, as someone who's gotten one of those red light tickets, I'll just freely admit that now. Uh, when I swear the thing was yellow, um, that is so different to me in terms of someone challenging that or even receiving that ticket to someone receiving a ticket with a video of their car going around a school bus. And if they really want to fight that, you know, it's fine. Go for it. That's their right. But I do think that it's, it's our obligation to allow our schools to be able to make this choice.
Counsel Ette, you had your hand up.
It was more a technical, not a technical question, but I was wondering, will the cameras only be operative when the bus is not in motion?
One would assume so. Um, anyway, that's down the road. Uh, the motion on the table is to refer to TSO. I see no other hands, so we're going to move to a vote. Uh, begin with Counsel Hanky.
Aye.
Uh, Bob Hegner?
Um, no.
Counsel Lord?
Nay.
Pam Rooney?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
No.
Alicia Walker?
No.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counsel Ette?
No.
And Lynn Griesmer is an aye. The motion fails. Um, and, um, we'll move on to the next one. Uh, get Counsel Hanky, I'm going to allow you to just go ahead and introduce this and decide which motion you want to put forward.
I move to refer the proposed acceptance of MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clauses 22I and J to the Finance Committee with a report to the Town Council by April 28th, 2025.
So you combine both motions? On the motion sheet, we had them as two separate ones, but there's no reason not to combine them. Okay?
Was there a second?
Second. Okay. Uh, I did, I seconded it. Uh, Counsel- Counselor Hanke, please go ahead.
So this is really technical. I think Finance needs to hear from our, our Finance Director and and all about the budget implications of this. It's not something I could provide the council with. But the HERO Act of 2024 enacted last August provided for some local options that increased veteran exemption amounts and changes how you determine eligibility for those exemptions, particularly for motor vehicle exemption. I tried to explain some of it, but what I really did was attach the DOR memo explaining it because I couldn't do it any better. It's that technical. We already offer and vote every year a number of exemptions. This changes some that relate to the veterans' side of that exemptions, but not the other side. So I hope we will consider this. I think it's a positive for our veterans in town. So I hope everyone will vote to refer so we can hear what the actual budget implications of this would potentially be for our town.
And I just want to note on the memo, there were, there's actually two different actions, but when Counselor Hanke made the motion, she combined them because they were both referrals in this case to Finance and they, but they will need to come back with two separate recommendations. Okay? Pam Rooney?
Just clarifying that this is, this is for motor vehicle exemptions, not property tax exemptions.
No, it's for property tax exemptions plus some new eligibility for motor vehicle exemptions. So it encompasses a bunch of things.
It's got two different parts to it. Are there any other questions or comments? George Ryan?
So Counselor Hanke, your, your concern is the sort of financial implications of this. And perhaps you would say that since we simply don't know, it's prudent to find out. I personally can't imagine that they would be that great and this would be a boon to our veterans. So how would you respond to that?
I actually agree with you that it would be a boon to our veterans. I think it's prudent, though, to understand what the budget implications are, as we do when we vote the other exemptions on a yearly basis. We get an estimate as to how much that is in less revenue for the town. I think it would be prudent to understand that for this one, too. But that doesn't mean, I I support it, but I think it's a prudent due diligence to understand what that implication is.
I just want to make a counsel comment. First of all, I think anything we can do to support our veterans is better than we're seeing in Washington. And second of all, however, I do think this is the same pot of money we just decided to reduce to get to the 4%. So I think it is very important to the Finance Committee to look at it. Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I want to talk to Melissa about this before I say it with certainty, but I believe that when you give exemptions, you don't reduce the tax amount that the town can tax, you're shifting who you're taxing in amount. And so that if that is correct, then we would want to know what is the amount that's being reduced that's then being shifted, is it being shifted? And how much is that going to affect other people in town? Those are a series of questions and I I would like to be able to ask Melissa.
Okay. So the motion is in fact to refer this to the Finance Committee where some of those issues can in fact be explored. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to start with Bob Hegner. Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Alicia Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And that actually took care of the rest of those who are moving on to the proposed bylaw outlawing public urination. And this is a, the motion, please go ahead. Counselor Hanke?
Lynn, can I just ask a quick question on the referral? Is there a date that we have to report back on?
The only thing, yes, thank you for asking that. The only thing I would suggest is that we need to make sure this is reported back in time for us to vote the tax exemptions, which we usually do around the end of June. Okay? Is that correct, Paul?
It says April 28.
It does say April 28, but I I just, if it, if it can slide, it can slide, but we vote tax exemptions in June. Okay? Does that help, Kathy?
Yes, just proplating the meetings, absolutely.
Got it. Anna, did you have a question?
I'm just going to argue with the motion that Mandy's about to make, so I can wait.
You're going to argue on which one? The next one?
What Mandy's about to say. I was just being proactive.
Okay. All right. I see a bunch of hands up. Are we done with this one? Are we ready to move on to the next one?
To 80.
To E. Counselor Lord, did you have a? Oh.
They're lining up.
Counselor Hanke, I'm going to let you just take it on.
To refer to the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee, the proposed general bylaw, three-point X, because it doesn't have a number yet, public urination with a report to the Town Council by, going to be generous, June 30, 2025.
Okay. I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Anna, you have your hand up.
All right. So I get to speak to my memo?
Oh, I'm sorry. You do get to speak.
So as, as the memo said, the, the origination of this was when I was in meetings with Chief Ting last year for some other thing this council was doing that, that I had concerns with at the council and was told by Paul to just meet with the chief and talk about it. I forget what it was. And and during that meeting, when we were talking, he said, you know what would be really helpful is a public urination by law that prohibits public urination in town because we don't have one. And that the only things, when, when it happens in our town, the only tickets the officer can write is one for either a warning or a summons for indecent exposure or disorderly conduct. And that a lot of times neither of those is necessarily the appropriate citation that that indicates exactly what the issue was and why the citation was there. And indecent exposure citations, I believe, I I'm sure the chief would correct me if I'm wrong, might come with some sexual offender issues with it, which is why there's a very big hesitation to write those for a simple public urination, but for something that's not necessarily equated with sexual offender status. And so, so I did some research. I looked at other municipalities that have these and there's a lot of decisions to be made with them. I'm hoping that GOL will talk to our chief, that this will get referred, that, that our chief will and the police will have some input into what they are. The way it is currently proposed, since I had to propose something, is I went as broad as possible, basically, and said, you know, if towns did this, I'm going to add that in. If they did that, I'm going to add it in and make it as broad as possible so that we could sort of decide if we wanted it narrower. I think in a town like ours, that sadly has a lot of public urination and sometimes on specific weekends, that giving our police tools to write a non-criminal citation for public urination or even a criminal citation for public urination is something that could be beneficial to them and to our town. So I hope the council will consider referring this to GOL. I know Anna disputes the GOL. I do not believe this is really a town service. Town service has a lot going on. It is not a community resource either. It's not land use. So I think GOL, since it's a general bylaw, is the more appropriate committee. I'm obviously open to whatever committee people think is appropriate, but I would think it's GOL.
Anna?
The mission statement of the Amherst Police Department includes, APD strives to protect the safety, rights and property of every person within the town of Amherst. While it may feel confusing, APD giving, issuing tickets is them working towards realizing their mission. That is the service that they provide in maintaining the safety rights and property, protecting the safety rights and property. They strive to do that in part through giving tickets, like what is proposed under this bylaw. The charge of TSO includes review and make recommendations to the Town Council on measures that may affect the provision of services to the committee, community by a town department. While it may feel counterintuitive to consider ticketing being provision of a service, it is the work of APD. So my, my logic here is that the work of our town departments and how they do that work and how they engage in it has in the past gone to TSO. If this goes to GOL as being because it pertains to not a, what has been stated not to be a direct service, then I expect all other legislation regarding police policy to immediately also go to GOL and not go to TSO. So I do believe this should go to TSO because it is concerning the work of a town department and how they do that work. GOL is happy to review this for clarity, consistency and actionability, but this is about the work of a town department and how they do it. Therefore, it should go to the Town Services and Outreach Committee.
Counselor Lord?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Can I, I had another note. Can I say that, too?
Please.
On a separate note. I've gotten a lot of arm raises from my side of the bench here. All right. The other, other item I had here was a question. So I was looking at the Town of Amherst website where we have a list, bless you, a list of public restrooms available in town and when they are available. My concern about this type of bylaw is when we enact it and what options people have, especially folks who don't have a home, a physical building home. So Paul, my question for you is what is the ETA on the restroom at Kendrick Park? I know that we do, the only, my understanding is that the only currently available 24-hour bathroom is in the Amherst Police Department currently. Other restrooms are available sunrise to sunset at the parks and within business hours at Town Hall, Jones, Munson, North Amherst, et cetera. So I'm curious about when the restroom in Kendrick Park would be available and I would encourage waiting to enact this bylaw until there is a second restroom available that's not in the police station.
Paul?
So the, the restroom will be installed before the council votes this. I can guarantee that.
Great.
We anticipate it will be ready by mid-July.
Thank you. And will that be open 24 hours? I can't remember. I apologize.
I don't know the answer to that, if it's 24 hours or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Lord?
Thank you. It's really in alignment with the last comment that Anna made, Counselor Devlin-Gothier, about maybe the majority in this town is college kids or knee-breeded college kids, but I feel like criminalizing public urination, at least for me personally, feels really problematic. In 2010, as an Amherst resident, I was unhoused for nine months. And at that time, Craig's doors didn't open until 9:30 and then Jones would be closed. And there were times where I would discreetly like go into the woods over there and have to do what I had to do. And if I had gotten a $300 ticket or the next one, I would be in jail. I would not be sitting here today, perhaps. I don't know. It just feels really problematic. And New York City passed this in 2023 and then last year they gave almost 10,000 tickets, one to a mother whose four-year-old had to pee. And I've been there with a three-year-old, oh, I just have to go so bad. And they potty trained, so we go to a bush discreetly and pee and then do I get a $300 fine or a $70, whatever the gradation is. So I just think, I agree that if we have more access to public restrooms, some of us won't go into a police department from different trauma or fear or whatever it is. So I'm glad we're going to have one at Kendrick Park. I know the Lutheran Church is 24 hours, but if I have to hold it and wait till I get there, that could cause renal damage or urinary tract infection. So I think before, I'm going to vote no to push this forward yet until we have more access to public spaces where people can pee in private. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
It's my pleasure to agree with my distinguished colleague next to me here. I think that if this does go forward, and that's a fair question, it should go to TSO. It raises issues that are far outside of what GOL does. Not that TSO is eager to take on more work, but I think she makes a good point that if this does go forward, it should go to TSO.
Alicia?
I just want to agree. Thank you. I want to agree also that I think if this were to move forward, it would make more sense to go to TSO, just inconsistent with other initiatives that we've sent to TSO versus GOL. But I would also agree with Counselor Lord that I'm not necessarily in favor of criminalizing this kind of action, especially without alternatives and just reminding that those things happen other places and not just in the center of town. And so like I'm just also thinking the number of occasions that I've had to pull over on the side of the road because my kids can't hold it till we get home or can't hold it till we get to a bathroom. And that happens very often. And like Counselor Lord said, I've heard of young children getting tickets for this. So just personally, that raises an alarm for me in addition to unhoused folks, but just being mindful of the fact that they don't only congregate in the center of town where there might happen to be another bathroom soon and multiple people sometimes need to use the bathroom at the same time.
Andy?
Yeah, the point that was just made by Counselor Walker is not wanting to criminalize behavior. I would like to hear more from Chief Ting because it's my understanding that his concern is that the only thing that they can do right now, if they feel that something is egregious enough that action is required, is to do something that's a criminal offense and a ticketed offense is, does not carry that same baggage with it. And he was looking, it, it's my understanding, and of course, this comes through Counselor Hanke, that he was looking for an alternative that was less punitive. So I guess the, I'm not sure how I'm going to come out on it in the end, but I do think that it is worth pursuing a little bit to get into those questions. And I know that some people who live in some sections of town in particular are very much offended by what they view as behavior that they find distasteful. And I do, you know, I'm not sure how I feel about their reaction to it, but I don't disrespect it.
Jennifer?
You know, my response when I read the motion, living in a district where, you know, people traverse at night from the bars to where they're going, but if, if one sees that activity, by the time they call the police and the police come, it's long since. Nobody's there. So I do wonder about the effectiveness in my district for that population.
Definitely. Kathy?
That actually was, I think Jennifer said you have to catch someone in the act to be actionable to do this. I think it, it sounds like there's a downside to doing this that's pretty severe. It never would have occurred to me, Counselor Walker, that this would be applied to young kids on the side of the road. And so, so.
The motion on the floor is a referral.
And, and if we don't refer, it dies. Is that what happens?
That is correct.
Thank you. I'll stop talking.
There is a motion, there is, has been a suggestion that the referral be to TSO, even to the point that the Chair of TSO has indicated, no, actually, the Vice Chair of TSO has indicated he thinks that's probably more appropriate. Counselor Hanke, do you want to change the motion to do that?
I am happy to, as long as you agree as my second or to change it from GOL to TSO.
I am happy to, as long as you agree as my second or to change it from GOL to TSO.
I agree. Okay. You had other comments. Okay. Uh, Anna.
So I, I wanted to just clarify one point that Counselor Hanke made in her memo. If I am understanding correctly, it's not, our current situation is not that there is no, um, is, is no consequence for, possible consequence for public urination. It's that we don't currently have tickets as a possible consequence for public urination. So it, and I am happy to be corrected if I'm not understanding, but if I'm reading this correctly, it's saying that there is, um, this is creating a different option that might actually be more reasonable than what's currently available, which is either, and nothing remains all, nothing is always an option, doing nothing or a verbal warning is always an option. But right now, the options are nothing, verbal warning or criminal.
Yes.
Punishment. So I, my, my thought here is that this actually, while it seems counterintuitive, again, our baseline is not, our, our baseline is not zero. We are starting with a baseline that's already punitive. If we were starting from a baseline of zero, I'd say no, let's not bring this in, but we're not. We're starting from a baseline where one of the possible consequences is really aggressive and the other possible consequence is doing nothing. So I would rather have a middle ground than have half of the, like, than have one of the options be that aggressive. And I don't think that this is a pretty solution, to be clear. Um, and I want, I want TSO to discuss this further, but I just, I wanted to clarify, we're not talking about there being no consequence, uh, no possible consequence. Um, so I don't know, I still am wrapping my head around it, which is why I do support referral. Thanks.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna not comment. Alicia.
Um, Anna makes a really good point there and I'm wondering if you might be able to just clarify, Mandy Jo, because I think you stated earlier that the options were ticket for indecent exposure, a different ticket for some conduct related something. What are the differences between that and what's being proposed? Because if it's just another ticket, is there a different, is there a different thing or is it just literally the wording and what would be on the ticket that we're changing? Because do tickets also carry fines? Is there a different fine being applied? Like, what is the actual difference between what is being proposed and what is currently, what the current options are?
Counselor Hanke.
So I think Anna stated it properly and appropriately. Um, right now, according to Chief Ting, um, and I pulled, it, it's a quote from Chief Ting from a, something he wrote me in an email, just so, you know? So I, and, and he said, when our officers encounter these circumstances, their options are a verbal warning, a summons to court for disorderly conduct and/or indecent exposure or arrest for these two options, disorderly conduct or indecent exposure. He wrote a TBL ticket and I added, that's the local bylaw ticket option that we've got. Um, would give our officers another option that may be more reasonable for these instances rather than a criminal route. So our local bylaws, while it says criminal or noncriminal, they're different than an actual state criminal law violation. Um, that, that's one of the big differences. And, and, and I, I want to say, when I introduced this, I said, I proposed the sort of the broadest sort of wording out there. I fully accept, expect and would accept and would not contest limiting this even further to make it a more narrow one, including removing, as I wrote in, in, in the current proposal, criminal enforcement instead of just noncriminal disposition. Um, like I said, I, I put in there sort of all the language, so it's easier, because it's always easier to subtract language than it is to add language. And so I put it all in there. It's also why I put sort of what the other bylaws do and what the, what the decision points are. Um, and I would expect wherever this gets referred, that that committee and the chief of police discuss what is most appropriate for our town for this bylaw, including the fine, whether it's both criminal and noncriminal and whether it applies in any public place, just on public ways, within distances of public places, within distances of perennial waters, on public, on private land, but viewable from, you know, there's so many options, right? Um, and, and that needs discussed. It can't be decided by one counselor making a proposal. And so that's, that's why I support referral and hope that it gets referred so that those decisions can be made in the right place.
Pam Rooney.
Uh, if, if I were to consider supporting this for referral, um, I would suggest that the date for a return and a reply to the council be no sooner than August. I think this, if it's something that comes into play, it's probably at the start of the school year, to be very blunt. Um, so there is absolutely no need to rush on this.
Thank you. Um, Alicia.
Yeah, sorry. I just had a follow-up. Mandy Jo, thank you. That was helpful. I'm wondering if you might just add mention of the fines, because that was just a second piece to my question. Um, like, do the current choices for ticketing include fines? And would this also include a fine? Would it be different? Are they uniform?
May I?
Please.
So my understanding is, and I, I, Chief Ting would have to clarify this, but if you're written a ticket under state law for either indecent exposure or disorderly conduct, that is a criminal offense. Criminal offenses come with jail time or probation, not with fines.
And.
So that's jail time or probation and permanent records on court documents.
And.
Chief Ting would be able to correct me if I am wrong. When it's a local bylaw, it comes with a ticket.
Right.
And a fine.
And indecent.
There might be fines along with it, but it can result in jail time.
Right.
Or probation.
Right.
And if you don't pay a fine, yeah, sorry, I just have a couple other. If you don't pay a fine, that can also result in jail time, correct?
That I cannot answer regarding a local bylaw. I, I don't know.
Okay.
The chief would have to answer or our town attorney would have to answer that.
And these, all of these questions, because I have more, but I feel like they might be more appropriate to ask, like, if this were to be referred, then we would revisit it at that time.
You can also forward your questions to TSO, which was, would be really the best thing to do. If we vote to refer. The motion on the floor now is to refer to TSO. Right now, it has a June 30th date on it. Again, those dates have never been hard and fast. So if it doesn't get here till August, it's fine. No more questions. We're going to move to a vote. We begin the vote with, um, Counselor Lord.
Nay.
Pam Rooney.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
No.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
No.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner. Counselor Lord. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I, all right. Uh, the good news is that may be close to our last vote. Um, the ayes have it. There are nine in favor and four opposed to referral. Uh, thank you. We are going to move on to appointments. We already did the appointment for the commission for people, for persons with disabilities. The other appointment, although there may be, be some discussion regarding the charge, is the Department of Public Works and Fire EMS Station Building Committee. There was a charge in your folder. The charge was provided by the town manager. The floor is open for, um, once we, let's talk about any questions regarding the charge first, and then I'll ask for who wants to be considered for this. Uh, Anna.
All right. So, um, I saw that this proposed committee was being referred to by the acronym of DFAC, which is pretty close to what I said when I saw the charge. Um, and that's my only terrible, terrible joke of the day. That's not true. I'm not allowed to swear in the meetings according to our rules of procedure, so you're welcome. Um, Paul, why, okay, I've, I've got a couple pages of notes here. So I'm, I do not understand why we would have one building committee, not two, given that the terms for this committee exist for the duration of these projects and both of these are significant projects. It seems that the way the charge is written, these are advisory committees, not a deciding body. I just wanted to confirm that. This body is created to provide, the purpose is to provide advice on options and preferred alternatives, not to make, uh, not to make recommendation to the town council, not to do, not to make any decisions. My biggest concern here is that the committee does not include any voting members who will be most impacted by the work of the committee. The school committee, the school, school, elementary school building committee includes those impacted by the building as voting members. And I'm a bit shocked that we wouldn't afford fire and DPW the same. I recognize that going through MSBA causes those processes to be different, but I would like to have, to see one, if, if this remains as a singular body, which I do not support, I believe this should be two different building committees. I would like to see, um, at least one representative, not necessarily the, the chief and the superintendent, but one representative from each of the bodies impacted with voting power on this committee. I'm also concerned by the absence of our facilities manager, um, sitting on this. I know we've got our finance folks on it, but I'm concerned about the lack of the facilities folks represented on here. So I, I will say I don't like this as a singular committee. I think if we were to be creating a capital projects building committee, that would be different and the charge would be different. Uh, and that would be longstanding and would have different terms. But if this is project specific, I believe this should be broken out into two. And I strongly believe that, uh, we should have voting members from the populations impacted.
Paul, would you like to speak to those?
Sure. So that, if we, when we get to a real building that's going to be on a specific site that we've selected, I think you're right that we will have a specific building committee for that project. But at this point, these two projects are sort of in tandem, working together. And so my initial, in fact, my initial, to move this project for, these two projects forward, I want to have one committee that is really focused on the two projects to get them launched. And then as we move down the road, we would create, um, separate committees for each, each of them. One may take off faster than the second one. So, you know, wasn't, I wasn't prepared to move both of them forward. But I felt like we, we sort of needed to get some traction and get something going. And setting up two different committees was going to be pretty onerous on our, the capital projects manager is named in the charge. Um, and that's Bob Parent, who's been doing it for the school and for the, um, and for the, um, the library and, and has, and would be pivotal to this as well. So that was my thinking on it, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So first off, to clarify, the capital, capital projects manager is listed as a non-voting member who is as, there as an, on, as needed, on an as-needed basis, according to the charge. But then if you're talking about creating separate committees down the road, once the projects are in more of that building phase, why would the term of appointment be the length of the building process, five to seven years? I'd like to see that clarified.
That's good. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So, so, but just to clarify, uh, so Bob Parent, that's the role he, he, he's not a voting member of either the Jones Library Building Committee or the Elementary School Building Committee.
I understand that.
Yeah.
The principals are.
They are. Yes. Uh, on, for the school building committee, yes.
But, um, the staff on the library are not voting members of the library committee? That's correct.
The library director, library director is.
Is, okay. All right. Um, Anna, did you have?
Nope. I asked all my questions. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hanke.
So I haven't, the same ones Anna had. I am concerned with the estimated time of this being five to seven years for a single appointment where you never get to reevaluate the appointments, particularly for counselors technically, because every two years we elect a new council and there may be better counselors. It, it might not be that the counselors currently on the committee are doing a bad job, but there might be better qualified people elected for the next term that appointing till the end eliminates that ability to re-decide, are there better people for this position? So I'm concerned that it's not our typical three years or two years for counselors or till the end of the counselor's, you know, term. I am concerned that there are not voting members that, as, as Anna said, voting members that would be working in these buildings, especially since the very last bullet point on the charge is begin schematic design for both projects, including funding, design and engineering services and other actions. That includes drafting and drawing up the design of the building. I was confused. You clarified. I thought this was given the term, going through the end of each of them. That could be a decade and a half with fire, depending on when fire starts, given the last thing we had. Yet it didn't say finish the project on this one. So I don't think it's clear at what point does this committee dissolve and two other committees go. I think you either need to make a committee for each that in the beginning meets concurrently and jointly, because, and, and then as the buildings go, they hold their own meetings, but they can meet at the same time as they're discussing locations for each and all. And it would solve, it would serve as the same process and purpose and already have those building committees so that halfway through the process, you're not creating a new building committee that is coming in, in the middle of schematic design. Because right now you've got, if you're creating a new one, this one's going to start schematic design and some other committee is going to end it. And that doesn't quite make sense to me either. Um, I also don't quite understand why it's chosen that the finance director is a voting member, but not the chief. Like, why, why did you choose some staff to be voting members and other staff not to be? And why did you believe two counselors were necessary on this committee?
So, um, why two counselors? Because the anticipation was to have the committee split at some point. So each counselor would be on, and I think you're right on the term, the five to seven years is, that was just taken from the library building committee. So probably having a time defined is probably a better idea for that. Uh, two counselors was anticipation of having the building, two building committees form out of this. And so the ten counselors would be involved from the very beginning in terms of how this got, um, how the buildings got started. Um, you know, I think the, um, that we could have membership for the, for the subject matter experts, um, for the fire chief and the, um, and the, and the DPW superintendent. My feeling was that this committee is really to get the ball rolling and get, get some, the basics laid out for where it's going to be, lay out this, this sort of plan for where the, um, DPW, how is, how we're going to lay that out. So there's just a lot of decision-making to be done in terms of the, the sketching out where, and the timing of where the, um, building projects will go. Um, and I just thought it was more important to have a, a good committee that was looking at the, the entire picture versus just one focused on one, one project.
Okay. Kathy.
I've been listening to these explanations, but also I, I think we made a priority, but I'm trying to remember our goals, whether we ultimately did it of trying to move faster on DPW, get it moving. And I do think it's difficult to deal abstractly with two buildings and concretely with one with the same group, unless you propose, like, the first year will be focused on DPW and the second year would be focused on fire. So Paul, just, I think logistically, how much the DPW has two, potentially two split sites for different parts of the building, where they're going to be housed in between, you know, uh, in interim, it's complicated. And, uh, it was very difficult on the school building until we narrowed which site. which site it was going to go on. But if we were dealing with two sites and pieces, I, I just think it would be very difficult. And I, I do think what Anna is raising, that a user of the building of some port should be, whether they're voting or non-voting, those views will be critical on each of these pieces. So I'm not sure on the voting part, because it looks like, at least initially, this isn't down to schematic design. But my understanding is we have the money for schematic design. We voted it a while ago, it's sitting in a pot, earning interest, because it's in a pot somewhere. But it would be nice to get this moving faster. This just feels like it's, would be moving slower than I thought it would be with both, rather than sequence first one, then the second.
Jennifer?
I, I like the idea of it being one committee, because, you know, they, I know people, there are people that will, you know, just disagree with this as even being something that should be on the table. But there are some people that think that maybe they should at least explore, have a conversation about whether there's a site that two buildings could share. So I think that one committee could at least start that conversation. So I actually think it's a good idea to start with one committee and then look at branching off. I did have a question. I mean, I realize in, in October of this year, it would just be a status report. But my sense is they might just be getting started. But when would you see the committee actually being formed?
I would hope they'd get started by July 1.
Okay, that would be great.
Get started, yeah.
Alicia?
Counselor Walker?
Thank you, Lynn. Well, Paul, thank you for putting something together, because I think this has been something that we like have generally agreed upon wanting to move forward. So I do appreciate seeing something, trying to move this forward. I feel a little bit conflicted about the charge here and exactly how that's going to work and benefit what the overall goal is. And I think Anna pointed more specifically to some of those things that I echo. But additionally, wanted to add, and maybe you can clarify this for me, what, like, how would this committee develop options for financing the project? Because it seems like there might be overlapping interests and responsibilities with other bodies and other committees. And so how would these bodies or committees work together if this is only an advisory committee to the town manager? So I feel like that feels a little bit unclear to me, how some of these things will be helpful. Other things make a little bit more sense to me. I also feel a little bit unsure as to whether or not this should be one committee. But I think with some clarity in terms of the charge, that that might also clarify that for me.
Oh, George, Counselor Ryan.
So once upon a time, not too long ago, I was under the impression that we were fairly close to a place for DPW and fire and that we had a financial plan for how to move forward. But reading this charge, it seems to mean to me that that's actually not true. And that this, one of the major tasks of this committee, right from the get-go, is to renew or review again the issue of location and come back with an tips of advice to the town manager about where they think these two badly needed projects are going to go. And also, they're now being asked to look into the financing and give advice on that as well. It may turn out that that's absolutely necessary, but just from the point of view of timeliness and the fact that this has gone on for so long, I do get the feeling that this is going to take another year at least. And once again, we're going to be waiting to figure out where these are going to go. And then we're also going to be waiting to figure out how we're going to pay for them. And when this committee is done, it's simply advised anyway to you, Paul, and you will make the final call. Is that a fair description of where we're at at the moment?
So the intent is not to, the extent, the, the intent of a joint committee is to expedite movement on it, to finalize site selection. The incoming fire chief did not like the location that the outgoing fire chief had approved. So, and he, and he has documented some information and wants to have that conversation, a broader conversation. So, you know, I don't think we put a, we don't recommend a fire station in a place that the fire chief does not recommend. So that has turned the original proposal around a little bit. And, but I think, you know, the, the new chief has vested interest in choosing the site that he thinks works best for his, for his team. That means we don't have a site for fire, that we need, and it does set us back a little bit, because we were, the, the goal from the council previously was get some sites and get started. The idea of having a, a two-location or multi-locations for the DPW is still active, with the idea being that we would, we would initiate the project at Ruxton with getting the temporary buildings put up, up there, so we can get some coverage for some of our buildings. And then we can start working on the DPW site. So that would take the, that's the building that's supposed to need and would be the, the higher priority. It would give us a little bit more time. I don't think we're really prepared for a building commis, committee for the fire station till we get an actual site. So once we get a site, that, then this bill, this committee, or we can create a new bill committee that would start working directly on that. We do have a designer that we've had previously that had done some of this, this work for the DPW that we would just maintain, because they've already done the work on it. We have some real expertise in the town, both with our superintendent, but with, specifically with our capital projects coordinator, Bob Parent, who has done this type of work before and knows the world very well. And I, I understand what people are saying about in terms of membership, whether they should have a vote or not. I, you know, they didn't really care, honestly. They said, it's not, I mean, Bob has as much influence on the building projects for the other projects as, as anything else. But we would clearly have to get an OPM in early. So I think the, the, the goal of this is just to get something going and getting some decisions made and sort of prioritizing the decisions that we, that we have to make. The financing piece is really, that's to, we still have the model that we're following. And so the, the model that we have means that we can't really start the fire until we've got the cash in hand. But, you know, we'll have that, I mean, we're projected to have that in the next few years. So, you know, well, not just a few years, but we, we need, we can get started on the fire station designed as well.
Pam Rooney?
I guess the question is, is coming up with all the feedback that's been received. Are we suggesting that this charge perhaps go back with the town manager and, and get,
Yes.
get worked on a little bit more?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Let's see, that was the biggest question. In terms of non-voting members, I think it would be smart to have fire chief or designee and superintendent of public works or designee. I mean, it does not have to be those two people. Clearly, they would be a resource. In, similarly, having the assistant town manager and the finance director as voting members, they are incredible resources. Do they need to actually be, you know, sitting at the table and voting on these? I, it's just a, a question.
Okay, Kathy? Yes, Paul, did you want to comment?
I see.
Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, I, I just want to address a question Jennifer's raised a couple times. Lynn, and way back when, first term, we were told that the land that DPW is sitting on does not have enough space to co-house fire and DPW. That we said there's not space there. So leaving open her, maybe there is, could we at least get a yes, no on that? Because one of the things I had remembered hearing, and I have notes on it, is DPW already is covering probably more space of the lot than they technically can, given how near it is to the, the back curb. So even if we move the vehicles off, it's not clear to me that enough. But it would be nice to get that answered. So I'm not asking you to answer it today. But if we know that can't happen in that place, then it's, that wouldn't be a reason to keep the committees together, if it can't happen in that place. And Lynn, you were the person that originally had said that. But that was when we were talking about all of DPW in one place.
This is starting to get into the debate of, that the committee will be getting into, so.
And so I just, you know, so, but if that door is closed, I'd just like to know it and I don't need to know it tonight.
Okay, thank you. George?
So if we're sending this back to Paul, to have him refining?
Yes.
Can we, maybe have Bennett, I missed it. Can we be explicit about what we are looking for? I, for one, do not have a problem with the voting members and the non-voting members. Are we asking him to rethink that? I understand the length of charge needs to be adjusted. There's an issue of what happens once one of these committees is, you know, formed and broken off. What Paul has said, that one of the counselors would go with that. So there's maybe some issues of process. My concern is this, we need to, I'm pretty sure most of you agree, we need to move this forward as fast as possible, but we do also have some things we need to have him resolve. I guess the question as much to Paul is to this body. Is he clear on what he's being asked to refine here? Are there things that I'm missing that should be added to the list? Because I really am hoping that when this comes back in two weeks, that we can vote on it and we can get started. I'd actually ready to do it right now, but I can see that's not going to happen.
I think you've captured it, Paul. Do you have any more questions?
No, I mean, the, there's no, the council doesn't vote on this charge, but I need our counselors who want to serve. And, but I did, I do value the comment, the comments that you've made. And I think a lot of really good ones, that I will refine the charge, for sure. But I do think sometimes it takes the council some time to select this member. So I'd like that, you know, have you all thinking about it, not for tonight necessarily.
Pam, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I had, I had a follow-up. One of the other comments that I forgot to make at the time was the, the timeframe. It was suggested that perhaps it should be shorter. And that makes a lot of sense, because if we said estimated to be three years, that means that, that puts a little more pressure on it at that point, at whatever point we split off into two groups or two, two projects, rather than five to seven.
Okay, thank you. Alicia, you have your hand up again?
Um, yeah, I agree with everything that's been said, but I also do hope that there can be some consideration given to the com, to the composition, specifically whether or not certain members need to be voting versus non-voting and the inclusion of some other members that were mentioned earlier. Just because, again, keeping in mind that it's an advisory body, like their votes aren't necessarily binding anyhow. And so I think that that might be important to consider when we're deciding who are the voting members, because some of the people already have decision, decision-making authority outside of this vote.
Thank you. Counselor Hanke?
Just for clarification, once Paul adopts this, I believe it's Paul that's going to be adopting this, our manager, not the council, we need an agenda item if we, as a body, want to vote them special municipal employees. Although, given this composition, the only ones that would refer to is the residents, the three residents, no one else. But we do need one. And so maybe the next, it, it sounds like we voted the SME status for the Commission on Persons with Disabilities about a year before that charge was adopted. So maybe we can vote an SME status on this at the next meeting or something, to just get it done.
Sounds like the plan. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Pam, you still have your hand up? Okay.
So Lynn, I'm sorry. So next time, potentially SME status could be voted. Next time, potentially, we as a council could elect two members.
Yes.
But ultimately, it's Paul's, will present us with his chart.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we are now to committee and liaison reports. The budget coordinating group did meet this past Wednesday. We had a long agenda, we got through about two parts of the agenda. The focus of the committee mostly was, I'm sorry, Anna, you have your hand up?
It's a question about BCG, so please finish.
Okay. The focus of the committee this last time, one was on looking at free cash and how we, learning about free cash. And the finance director gave a very nice and thorough presentation on that. We also discussed the fact that the insurance rate has now gone down to fourteen point something. And we also discussed that the town managers now brought the budget back up to point, uh, to four percent. There was discussion as to whether or not the last half percent would be across the board, based on the financial guidelines. The plan right now is that the next BCG meeting would be at the beginning of April, probably on a Wednesday at noon, like we have done it before. Are there other comments? Anna?
Given the deadline of April 1st for the school committees, I'm, I'd love to see BCG meet again prior to, I, I think BCG can't wait this long to continue to meet. I think that we need to be meeting more regularly, given how extensive the conversation was and given what BCG is, the role that BCG is supposed to take in coordinating budget guidelines. I'd like to see us starting to even think about next year far earlier than we have. So I, I'm concerned with the gap between BCG meetings being as long as it is. My other request is for the council, so I will wait with that one.
The, just to, as an aside, the school, while the school committees will be voting their budgets, they don't provide them to us until April 1st.
I, I understand that, but the conversation that's going into them continuing their development of their budgets and given that things are continuing to be discussed at the council, I feel that waiting until the beginning of April for, to convene that committee again is too long of a gap.
Andy?
There was one additional thing that BCG heard for the first time. And that is that the town manager reported to us that for the first time ever, in his experience, and I think it's bigger than that, that the gap between the four percent and the amount that would be needed to level fund town services is half a million dollars. And that is a sobering fact, because it would mean that if, even under the best of circumstances, that substantial cuts here, there need to be made somehow. And I'm not going to speculate on what they might be. That's a discussion that is to follow, but it, it is worth noting that additional information.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? CRC, Pam Rooney?
Thank you. The CRC met on February 27th, focused entirely on solar bylaw. We will talk this, this coming Thursday about the bulletin board announcements for vacancies for ZBA and planning board positions. So we'll get the bulletin board up and running, so that we can encourage people to start putting in their citizen activity forms for it.
Community activity form.
Okay. Are there any questions for CRC? Elementary School Building Committee? Kathy?
We meet this Friday, we haven't, the last time we met was a while ago. It'll be an update on construction.
Okay. Finance Committee, Kathy?
Finance Committee met on March 4th. And in our packet is the second quarter financial report for the town. And we received the same news that BCG received the day after, that the town has now found a way to go to four percent. We had a discussion of where the ARPA money sits. If you look at the second quarter, what you'll see is the ARPA money was applied to the health insurance line. And so we will have a big surplus on that line because of the way the funding will work. And we won't see that till the end of the year, at the close of the year. So there was a nice walkthrough. So there was a nice walkthrough on that piece. And the rest of it is trying to figure out a schedule for reviewing the budget when it comes to us.
GOL, Anna?
So GOL was the unlucky victim of the website snafu the other day, which deleted our agenda. Therefore, we did not meet the posting deadline and cannot meet on tomorrow. So we are currently, I have an email drafted where I will poll committee members and guests to see if they are able to meet the following Tuesday, so next week, a week from tomorrow. Committee members, please email me back as soon as you can. I will send the email right after this. GOL will be first addressing the University Drive overlay for clarity, consistency, and actionability from CRC, as we have a strict and looming deadline for that. We also have three proclamations and resolutions on the agenda, as well as discussion for filling the vacancies on Finance Committee and the Charter Review.
Any questions on GOL? JCPC, Kathy?
We're meeting every Wednesday at 4 o'clock. We reviewed, actually, I'm going to blank out, Bob can probably help. We went through the Police Department and one other, oh, facilities, last week. And we will have Fire Department and a cluster of others this week. Schools will be the following week. And at that point, we will have gone through all the projects on the list. So people, if anyone is interested, there is a listing of every project that's on the wrist for FY '26. And it's in last week's packet, and it'll be in again in this week, as it gets revised.
Thank you. Any questions? Jennifer?
Yes, so I guess I was reading about, I guess, picking up on Anna's comments, speaking as a resident before the Finance Committee, when you had expressed, I don't know if it's concern, that when we took $500,000 from the sidewalks and roads, kind of set aside, hoping that we would get a request from the school, from the schools, but that hadn't come in, we hadn't gotten requests for that $500,000 that we didn't allocate to roads and sidewalks. Is that something that the school committee or the superintendent could make a request of JCPC for that $500,000? Would go through JCPC?
Kathy?
The school committee, it's wide open for them to make capital requests. So there is a request on the list for the sixth grade move to the middle school. But that is also a piece of this ARPA money that was set aside to come back. That was still on that list, so we've got a duplicate count. But there is not, there is no request for capital from the regional, region. I mean, and that, and there's a reason for that. It's got to go through the regional process first, and the other towns have to agree on it. So we don't actually ever review a regional request. We do have pieces of other school, we have some equipment. But they have to propose a project for the town to be looking at.
So that $500,000?
It's not that there's another $500,000. We actually, the vote on banks took down our free cash amount, cut it in half. So what was an extra amount sitting there has been spent. And we took the ARPA money and we set it aside, and we'll have that at the beginning. And Paul, you can help me. You know, at the close of this fiscal year, we will see that money. But right now, it's on a line item, there was an eligible line item. So it's not like there's a piece of money sitting somewhere. But JCPC has a large amount of capital money to spend, and we have no proposal. So you can't spend it on something that it has not been proposed.
Paul, did you want to comment, please?
So there may be, we did have a conversation on Friday with the Superintendent and Finance Director, and they may have some things that they would like to get started this fiscal year that they would bring to the council as an appropriation request. And if they want to, if they, you know, if they wanted to do that, they could certainly ask the council's funding for that.
And that would come to JCPC?
I think they should be reviewing everything with JCPC. I'm not sure if they're prepared at this moment in time, you know?
Thank you.
And schools, schools isn't on till two weeks from now, Paul, you know, but, so right now, there is a list for some potentials for CROCCER, but they're not for FY '26. They're for FY '27, '28, and '29. So we don't, we have some vehicles, but we don't have other pieces.
Right, so if I can, so I think their priority this year is on transportation issues. They don't have capacity. If you give them money, they can't spend it, basically. I think that's sort of what their, the concern is, because of the turnover in their Facilities Department. So I think that that's, but they can explain that to you. I know Melissa and Shannon were on the phone for an extensive period of time today to talk through what their needs are.
And I should just say, speaking as one member, there are some other projects proposed for this year that potentially don't need to happen or don't need to happen at the same level. And that'll be a discussion we have as a committee, so there may be additional room. And schools have proposed an electric school bus and some other vehicles. So when I said there just hasn't been a building related, but there are some vehicles on. And those aren't small, those vehicles, in terms of dollars.
Right, and those are under capital.
Anna, you have a question?
I'm realizing I jumped the gun and forgot to lower my hands. I'm, I'll wait till councilor comments and questions.
Thank you, sorry. Let's see, I think we're Jones Library Building Committee, Pam?
There has been no Building Committee meeting. Maybe Paul could give us an update on Chapter 106.
Sure, so the 106 process is now in the hands of the Mass Historical Commission. There is a draft agreement for all the 26 consulting parties to review. And I think the, right now, it rests with the Historic, Mass Historical Commission. And I know they have had some staff turnover as well. So we just don't have any, we have no idea when that will come back.
So TSO had a meeting last Thursday, March 6, and we were unable to produce a written report. So I'm going to have to do the oral report instead. It was a very interesting meeting, I should say, because, well, we first started off with something we already voted on tonight, Commission on Disabilities. And we unanimously, four to zero, with one member absent at that time, voted to recommend the action that was taken by the council earlier this evening, and pointed out the provision in the Charter that requires that the, if somebody's being appointed to a committee and they're not a resident, that the council needs to vote on that also. And that was incorporated in the motion that you voted on this evening. The other two things that we talked about at length, is that was not a lengthy discussion, was the Southeast Street discussion. And basically, I think that what we were focusing on was a little bit of process and, as to how to go about making it, getting a decision reined for presentation back to the full council regarding options and what information was needed. The other thing that came up during the discussion is really, it goes back to another committee that's already reported. And that is that we have found out that the request to the JCPC from DPW for the project was in two pieces for the current, for the year that they're working in FY '26. I believe it's $500,000 for design. And then, in the year following, $6 million for construction. And we recognized that that was a significant sum of money. We did not know what the basis of the calculation was. We did not have staff support to explore that further. There was discussion as to whether, given the fact that the school is going to be open before the work is done, whether it was possible to consider waiting until after the school is open to see if the problem is really developed to the extent that it has. This is a discussion that is ongoing. I'm just summarizing where we were. We have not completed that discussion, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment with dates. The other thing that was very informative for us is, as I reported in prior report, we had two people from Northampton who were involved with their Transportation and Parking Commission to help us understand how theirs functions and compare it to what was proposed for Amherst and has been, had been referred to TSO. The two people who were there were Council President Alex Jarrett. Alex represents Florence, he's a district or award representative, as it's termed in Northampton. And he is a member of the commission. They have two councilors, by the way, it's structured in their committee charge, that are members of the commission, which is different from what was proposed to us. And it's been the subject of some discussion within TSO regarding the pros and cons of having a councillor members. So it was worth having Alex present from that perspective. And then the other person who joined was their Director of the Department of Public Works, who has the equivalent role that our Superintendent of Public Works in Amherst has. Her name is Donna Scalia, and she chairs the Transportation and Parking Commission. I cannot, at this point, without, I, it just wouldn't be fair to try and even summarize the discussion, though I do note that it is available, because I'm sure by now, it's been posted on the town YouTube channel for anybody who's interested in watching that presentation, if they've been interested in the subject of Transportation and Parking Commission. And so where we are is that on March 20, which is our next meeting, we are going to actually have a discussion about what we heard from Alex and Donna at the meeting that was last week. And then see if we can reach some basic conclusions about where we are in our recommendation, and then refer the matter to the Transportation Advisory Committee that's very interested in the subject. They are meeting the evening after our morning meeting. And Bob Hegner is a member of both groups. And so that he's going to be the bridge that makes sure that there's proper information presented, is my, I think what our understanding is. And then, if they have any comments, we're hoping that we can then get them back on April, by April 3, and start working on actually a proposed revisions to what was presented to us that would reflect all of this discussion and get it back to all of you. So we do think that, I think that the consensus is that the idea of a commission is a good idea, that it really would be an improvement in our processes. And so we want to keep it moving, and that's what the basic plan is. Other things that we want to do between, in the April, March 20, April 3, and April 17 meetings is hear from our Department of Public Works regarding their process for making decisions about roads and sidewalks and construction in order. And it follows a presentation that was made several years ago of a similar nature to a very different TSO. It's just not the same members, so we kind of have to go back a little bit and pick up on that. And those are the, and then, of course, what was referred tonight. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but that, I wanted to report on the last meeting and give you a sense of where, some of the things that we are working on now.
Are there any questions? I just want to clarify, Bob is not a member of TAC, he is liaison to TAC.
No, I'm sorry, I misstated, he's a member of, he's a member of JCPC.
Oh, JCPC, thank you.
It's actually...
I was trying to figure this out.
Yeah, Councilor Ryan is the liaison to TAC. So you will be reporting to TAC that night, and Bob will be reporting to JCPC. And I think that Kathy could confirm, or Bob can confirm the date that they will be meeting with DPW to hear their presentations, but it's yet to come.
Okay. Are there any questions? Liaison reports, any? We approved the minutes. Paul, Town Manager's report, hired.
So I just went on the appointment for the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. Someone mentioned to me that this had been in the works for over a decade, like with, I think, two managers before me, that they'd been advocating for this. So just, congrats to Myra Ross and the whole team for their persistence. And I think it will be, you know, I think it's really set up nicely, so it's good. Two big events coming up on Saturday, April 5, is the big Global Village exhibition, celebration that the DEI Department has been organizing. And then the next day is our rubbish roundup, which is, it's our annual cleanup. But there's a new British person at the, at the bid who had suggested rubbish roundup. So we went with that. And Angela and Sam are working really hard, and we're hoping that you all want to participate as team captains at some of the various locations. So that, that's usually a really popular event, quite honestly. As Anna said, our website has been on, what's it called, denial of service attack. And it's been attacked again today. And we found that the town of Lexington was also under attack. We don't know why, but it's being picked up by different, there's different surveillance groups out there from the federal government, who alerted us that they found something on the dark web, saying that we just took down Amherst Mass. So we are being patient to, I mean, being vigilant on it. But sometimes there's, when it's getting pounded with, what a denial of service is, that you get so many requests, the website can't respond, it just sort of freezes it up on people. So once it processes all those requests, or the people get tired of sending them. So that's something that our IT department has been working with. And then the last thing was just to report on the events from the Saturday. And again, it was a really a major team effort. IT department was, DPW helped, Crest Department, the dispatchers were spectacular, and of course, fire and police. And so with that, we had, and working very closely with our UMass partners, of course. And we had a number of other agencies who had sent both police officers and ambulances to support us. And this one was a kind of a short time, but very intense. And this one was, was a kind of a short time, but very intense, from about like eight till about one o'clock. We shut down the emergency operations center around 2:30. And there were 29 arrests, eight summonses, and the majority were alcohol-related or for disorderly contact, conduct. The fire department reported 25 medical transports by ambulance between 9:30 and 2:00, with 14 being related to alcohol consumption. And of the medical, 25 medical transports, 17 were from the townhouse area on Meadow Street. The others, there were, there was regular calls for ambulance service as well. We were pretty well prepared, but we still, the intent, the number of calls all within a very short period of time did overwhelm us, where we had to bring even more ambulances in to help, to help address all the issues that we were finding. So this is a situation that we watch, that we learn from every year. It, it always takes a different shape. The weather was fairly nice this year. That's always a big determination, determinant on what happens. And we will all be doing, you know, the town will be doing its debrief, and then there's a larger debrief with the university. Coley Dickinson Hospital was well-prepared, and they didn't, they had a wing set up for people coming from this event, mostly alcohol-related. And, and so that, they say, they felt that that worked pretty well for them, and they had additional staff on, on duty for that. So all in all, a big event, but we survived it, and no noise complaints from our communities.
Counsel Hanke.
With regard to the DNS attack and the fact that it affected published at least one, I don't know whether it couldn't be published, or Anna referred to it as being removed. We just couldn't get onto the website to make it. Is there alternative ways of posting these meetings like we used to, attached to the door on Town Hall, in enough time so that we can still hold the meeting and then get it onto the online one if this were to happen in the future? Because that's a disruption that is potentially going to require holding another public hearing.
I think we can.
So what happened with the GOL agenda is, as I was.
Would you please speak?
As I was trying to submit the GOL agenda, the website wasn't responding, and I had to try a couple of times to get it posted, and it seems that it just didn't work. I didn't check that it was finally posted. I had to do the same thing with the council meeting when I posted it. I had to put it in two or three times because the website just wasn't responding. So it wasn't that it was removed, it just didn't, it didn't save it as I was trying to post it. I don't think we see a concern about this happening again and again. But to your question, the posting location that's on file with the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office is the town website. There's not an alternative location. But if this continues to be a concern, it's something that we should think about, having an alternative location and what the Attorney General's Office recommends as an alternative location in the event that something like this does happen, our website goes down.
Is.
Thank you.
Since we have another website called whatever, I can't remember. The other one that we created about two years ago, can we use that site?
Now, the, we have to let the, there's a listing of where public notices are, are posted. Ours is the town website. The school committees is their board docs site. It's very specific, so we couldn't just do something else in a different, because people know to look there for our meeting notices.
Thank you. Are there other questions of the town manager? Jennifer?
I just wanted to ask very briefly if there was any update with the waste hauler bylaw? Not bylaw, with the RFP, I'm sorry.
So we met with a consultant, the superintendent of Public Works, and I did. And that was about two weeks, 10 days ago. We could go Friday, I guess. And we haven't really reconnected based on, since then with the superintendent, with the superintendent of Public Works. I'll meet with him tomorrow morning, we'll see.
Does that mean that, that the RFP, do you have a consultant for the waste hauler?
We have a consultant who's willing to help us. Yes, that was the issue we were having, is finding someone who could do it.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions of the town manager? Then I just, I do have a few notes. Earlier this evening, I received a packet that came from Kanagasaki. It was three copies and translations of their visit and the students' reports. Andy's got one here. I'm keeping one that I will make sure goes to the schools. But if you have it and so forth, please make sure we get it back so that we can give the schools as many copies as possible. Each of the students' reports are in there, as well as a letter from the superintendent, and they're all translated as well. And it's a actually published book of pictures, et cetera. On future agenda items, we start our meeting on the March 24th at 6:30. We have a poll hearing. We have three proclamations. There's been a request for a library update, and the action item will be the first reading of the University Drive overlay. Based on tonight, it is possible we have the charge come back for DPW Fire EMS. And there may be other things as well. Are there other requests for agenda items? Anna?
I would like to request the Council President, please, discussion and vote to revise the fiscal year 2026 budget guidelines at our next meeting. And I'm happy to submit a memo outlining a proposal to increase the percentages allocated to the schools. I will have a memo to the council on that topic. I'd also urge the Council President to consider convening a work session alongside the elementary and regional school committees to discuss long-range funding plans for the different groups. Those are my two requests for future agenda items.
Bob?
I wanted to say, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, that we need to move forward on the DPW and the fire station. We can't delay this, no matter what problems are in the charter for the, or in the charge for the committee, we need to move forward. I, I've been on the Finance Committee for far too long, and this was an issue when I first joined the committee, and we haven't gotten either station even designed yet. So we need to move forward on these. We can't just keep kicking the can down the road. Every time we do that, it just gets more and more complicated and more and more expensive. So I, I just urge this committee to, really, to this council, to, to, to try to, let's, let's get a decision made and let's move forward.
Thank you for sharing my frustration, which goes back to 2006. Kathy?
I have actually a question from Anna, for Anna, if we want to reconsider the guidelines in terms of where, thinking about where money might come from. Would you want to have a discussion at the Finance Committee meeting on March 18th? Or do you want to wait to have a discussion just at the council meeting? And I'm saying this because right now, we, we have CPAC referred to us, but we, we could have a discussion on it. So I'm not sure what you're thinking of, other than a bigger percentage, you know, in terms of, I have some ideas of where the money could come from, but we have to, we have to provide in guidelines a way of financing it. Yep.
So I, I just want to clarify, Kathy, what you're suggesting is that rather than the discussion regarding the guidelines, start with the council, that it go back, it starts with the Finance Committee who originally drafted the guidelines?
Not necessarily. I believe what Kathy was asking was if she should place something on the Finance Committee agenda. She was not talking about changing anything about this coming to the council.
Yeah, I wasn't, I was just saying, having, having a first discussion with some of the ideas so they could be hammered out a bit more, so at the point it gets to the council, you, you've got input on it. So I, you know, so just staring at the budget and staring the question we had from Public Today, long range, I don't think we have any long-range solution to this, given what the state is doing in terms of state funds. And proper just in two and a half, we can only go up so much. We, we've got a long-term problem. Do we have at least a bridge, a bridge way of doing something in FY26? So.
I, we need to be careful not to start into, into the debate, but just get the issue.
I'm not at all. I'm just saying that there is space on the Finance Committee, if you wanted to start a discussion about this on the 18th, and I would just need to know.
Can I respond?
Please.
I think it would be helpful if Finance Committee could start the discussion, considering that we, as a council, I believe, do not meet again until the 24th. And so if the council, if the Finance Committee wanted to begin a discussion, I think that would be helpful in terms of if there is information that may need to be brought to the council, the Finance Committee could request that, just to start a, kind of start the conversation, that would be fine. What I don't want to have happen is for this to be considered a referral to finance. I still would like the council to discuss, and I don't, that's not what you were suggesting, but I still would like the council to discuss it on the 24th.
So that's fine, and it's just, I think you should plan on coming.
Happy to be there, always.
I need to go back to your other question. And it's a work session with the regional and the elementary schools regarding long-term funding.
That was a rough thought. I think that it could be that all of the bodies need to come together. It could, I'm, I, what seems clear to me is that BCG is not enough, and that we, as a council, do not have a grasp on where the long-term plans for funds exist, what those look like. And it might be that they don't exist, it might be that they do, and we just don't know. But I think I'm, I'm really trying to take a lesson from some of the sessions that, or one of the sessions that some of us were at during MMA, where it talked about good, good community budget decision-making, and how these bodies need to come together beyond just a representative group like BCG, which should still exist. And we don't come together with those groups to talk about our budgets and talk about long-term, and we all need to be on the same team here. And I think that having one of those meetings, I, I'm not necessarily going to recommend exactly when that occur, but I do think that these bodies need to be coming together to talk about these long-term challenges that we're all facing, and how we are each uniquely impacted by unique challenges. That sounds like word salad, but what I mean is like, the, the challenges that are putting the town in a deficit are different, and the Venn diagram overlaps with the challenges putting the schools in a deficit. And so I think we need to come together to really talk through what those issues are, and, and start to be thinking a bit more long-term in terms of our, our strategy here. I'll stop there.
Paul, did you have any comment? Okay. Andy?
Yeah, the MMA session that you referred to, the description that was made was really a description of our budget coordinating group. It was not, it was not having all of the boards and committees get together as committees of the whole. And I, I'm pretty confident in how I, what I heard at that session. But I think that, you know, the question really is whether it's a good idea to get all of the bodies together at one point, as opposed to what was said at the, in, in that particular community. The other thing that we need to recognize is that, yes, we do have a big problem, we do need to talk about it, we do need to try and problem solve it as we can, but we cannot pretend that this is just an Amherst problem. You only have to pick up the Gazette and look at the number of Hampshire County communities that are dealing with the same issue, and it is really being dealt with statewide. It's not, you know, it's a little bit, seems right now, more pronounced in Western Massachusetts, but that may be because of who we're hearing from. My sense from the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee is, is that there is a systemic issue that's much greater. And I think that we've talked about some of those things, same issues within our local discussions about charter school funding and Chapter 70 distribution. But, you know, given what Paul reported about the $500,000 deficit for just continuing level services for the town, which is not a way that we've looked at budgets ever before for the town, has not dealt with level services budget, that has been a school approach to dealing with budgets, but it's never been a town budget. It is going to be a difficult discussion.
Anna?
Andy, I believe it was both, and I am, I'm happy to pull up the slide deck and reach out to the folks from those other communities. They talk about the, we're talking about Mansfield. They bring the, all three bodies talk about cash reserves and stabilization. They don't say, and then they have a tri-board, which is similar to our, sorry, this is the, there is not similar to our BCG. It is an additional layer of communication. The tri-board meeting consists of all members of the following, school committee, their select board, and their finance committee. So it is all members, it is not a representative. And we, yes, we are absolutely in a state funding crisis, and I'm not trying to get into this topic, but we can't just stand here and wring our hands because we have a state funding crisis. We need to do what we can do. And respectfully, yes, the town is facing a deficit, and the schools, in order to keep level services, and the schools are facing a bigger one. This is not a matter of, oh, all of a sudden, the, the municipal services end of things beyond the schools, because the schools are a municipal service in many ways, in always. We can't just say that because we're, sorry, I'm going to try not to start debating this issue, but I would very much like to see this on an agenda as soon as possible, because I think that there's a lot to discuss here, and a lot of it comes down to how we plan to do governance in this town.
Counsel Hanke.
Something that has been variously, this is a potential future agenda item, but I don't know where on the agenda it would go, or how quickly. BCG and some school committee members, it has come up at, but not really as a full-throated discussion, as a what-if. And I think it's time for the council to have that what-if, and should we seriously consider it, which is a prop two and a half override. Instead of it being BCG, can we, it might be more appropriate under a discussion item, not an action item at this point, of what would it look like? How much would it be? How long would it last so that the conversations and the requests and the debates we're hearing of, we don't want to go through this every year? So how much would it have to be to not go through it, this issue for the next decade, say, where there's enough within the levy limit to deal with all the inflationary pressures? I think we need a conversation about what that might look like extensive-wise. That's not to say we're, we would say yes or no, but, but what, what would we have to be asking of the, and should we be pursuing that on a more serious level?
And have that as a council discussion?
Yes, have it as a council discussion.
I, I, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Let me just mention under Counsel comments that three of us did go to the Mass Municipal Legislative Update, Andy, George, and myself. We went out to Dalton, and it was very interesting and amazing misperceptions about Amherst, including that somehow or another, we get a huge amount of pilot money because of UMass. We set them straight on that. I know, I mean, it was just astounding to watch somebody suggest that we had that. I, anyway, it was good, they're doing the other ones this weekend, and we will get slides, and we'll share that with you at some point. The other thing, I'm just going to. The other thing, I'm just going to apologize, tomorrow morning, you would, or tonight, or tomorrow morning, you will get an email. We do have a meeting with the Senator and Mindy on Thursday, so I'll want any topics. I'm sorry I didn't get it out earlier. Okay. Are there any other counselor comments? Counselor Hanke?
A topic, school funding, state advocacy for school funding and rural aid and all of that. And potentially a conversation for the residents in our town with our senator and representatives regarding state school funding. So that they're not hearing just from us counselors, that they actually sit down with our residents. Might be an open meeting, might be a public forum, I don't know, but please bring up that topic. My counselor comment is, I just wanted to second what Andy said about MMA policy committees and that we are not the only town going through school budget issues. My policy committee met for the first time since it was reconstituted last week, and we all introduced ourselves. And there aren't many Western Mass people on that committee, but nearly everyone, which means Eastern Mass, Northeastern, Southeastern, the Cape. I was shocked at how many people on that committee talked about their towns going through operating overrides this year because of the issues and needing more funding. And also nearly everyone said school funding is the issue. And, and it, it comes into the town too, but gateway cities, rural cities, hold harmless communities, it didn't matter where you were from, school funding was an issue. And, and a large, a higher percentage than I would have thought are seeking overrides this year.
Yep.
Thank you, different issue. Our council and.
Please, please.
I have my hand on it and my mouth is here. But I, we stood and recognized the strength and resiliency of the Tibetan people who have suffered greatly at the hands of China. As an individual, and I hope someday as a council and a community, we can also stand up and recognize the strength and resilience of Sinians in the West Bank who have suffered land annexation and destruction of their homes and schools. I hope that we can stand up and recognize the strength and resilience of the people in Gaza who are being systematically and continually bombarded and in an attempt to destroy them. We need to look at this issue and stop having favors, but we look at what's happening in the world.
Are there any other comments? I'm going to make a motion to adjourn and seek a second. End the vote, I'm going to start with Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shing?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette? Lynn Griesmer?
Aye.
Counselor Hannick?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
And Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. It's unanimous. We're adjourned, it's 10:25.